Okay. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to provisions of the upper public meetings act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meetings schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and the Two River Times on January, uh, February first, twenty-twenty-four. That notice is also posted on the Golden Board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice is also being sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough ordinances and then in Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi-judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the Borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough code enforcement officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required of New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zoning plan. Variants is related to the future use of land and are not intended or authorized for any temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, full shield.
Mr. D'Chesney?
Here.
Mr. Thirdway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Forden? Dr. Walker? Mr. Pincella?
Here.
Mr. Schmudding?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. Please join us in reply.
Flaglegations to the United States of America. To their honor, it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, in justice for all.
All right, we've got a big agenda tonight. Uh, we're gonna start with the Calistre. How'd I do, Mark?
Calistre, Chair.
Calistre.
Very good. Good evening, all. Our applicants are the applicants. And also your calistre.
Mike, from them, we have jurisdiction in this matter.
Yeah, yeah.
You ask you to bring all your witnesses up toward. We're just gonna testify, I think they might testify. Marty, Marty's gonna recuse. But directly, if I could, Mr. Ryan, step down. Yes, you stand up, remain standing. Anybody else? The applicants can testify.
The applicants are not gonna testify, the board has continued their question.
Raise your hand, please. You saw him swear the testimony. The board will be the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Okay. When they ask, Mr. Rizzo, I'm gonna swear you in also. You saw me swear that testimony, you put the board to be the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I did.
Okay. I'm gonna ask that you, before you start testifying, that you spell your last name for the record on all the directions of your counsel. Okay? Um, mark some exhibits first. Uh, we can mark some exhibits, yes. Let me, let me do this. Here's what I have so far. I have the application, together with the legal basis to believe checklist. Uh, since they were all received September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and mark that as A1. A2 is going to be the three shoots of images, totally six images of the site. A3 is gonna be the permit denial July twelve, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, zoning officer, A4 is gonna be the survey appropriate prepared by Morgan Engineering. Looks like it was marked, trivia from the campaign. A5 is the variance plan, it also includes two hundred foot list. Uh, proposed demolition tax maps, zoning map, key map prepared by Morgan Engineering. It's like April fifteenth. Revised April fifteen, twenty-twenty-three. A6 version of the architectural drawings, three sheets, proposed plant elevation, proposed floor plan, rear and side elevations in the floor area building populations. Also, ZB1 is the engineering review of eleven-nine, twenty-twenty-three, over signature, CME, over signature, Chris O. ZB2 is going to be the engineering review, uh, February time, or twenty-twenty-four, again, CME, over the signature, Chris O. Um, with your permission, now, are any of the exhibits that you want to have, Mark?
Yes, uh, still, could you call them out? I think we're at A7. So the board's, we have, uh, the first one is the, the site plans from Morgan Engineering.
Site plan. Same date?
Uh, correct.
Colorized, yeah.
Colorized, as requested. Um, and then we have a breakdown of the, uh, of four plan here, uh, as far as square footages are concerned.
I think it was already part of your exhibits, was it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we have a, uh, some photos here on this one, um, along with the elevations.
So it looks like the second elevation.
Right, the rear elevation and the side elevation.
Okay. Mark that A8, mark that forming. Positions. In both.
Right. We have a before and after photo, we have a proposed and a and then the last one is the fourth plan along with the final. And then, and that's a photo of existing site.
And that date on the, on the third sheet?
That is that's two-sixty-four.
Two-sixty-four, that's A9? A9. A9. Any other exhibits, too?
Uh, that, that's all.
Okay.
Not this time. Uh, actually, I have one. I have, uh, the combination of what has just been marked, to be, to be identified as packet on eleven by seventeen.
Okay, so A7, A8, A9, one packet?
Yes.
Mark that as all ten. Uh, preliminarily, I understand that the applicant is also seeking some waiver from the checklist, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Can we take care of those preliminarily?
Sure, I'll run through them really quick. Uh, first two are draft notices, um, which are the point I'm sure. Three. And then the standard three are outside agencies, which are, I find board, real, SCD, and uh, to the extent they'd be required, I'd ask that they be submitted, however, uh, I'm not related to that, so, no, I need to sit there for a little bit.
That's very ten, that's a combination of
Absolutely. It would eliminate these small questions.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Mr. Rizzo.
Um, the last three are Mountain County planning board, Freehold SCD, and Mountain County Health Department. And to the extent that they're required, though, the applicant agrees to speak.
Okay. Um, you recommend you grant the waiver?
I do recommend waiver to grant.
Any board members have any questions or, or concerns about the potential preparing the waiver and condition for?
Okay, we've got, they're very good, thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the Calistre family has owned this property since two thousand and four. They've raised their six children there, five of whom have left the nest and one has left, three of which have gotten married in the last ten months, and one of which is expecting a child. The reason for the requested application this evening is so that this three-bedroom house, which served the family well in the last twenty years, can have a fourth bedroom that would serve as a guest bedroom with an en suite bathroom. And we would be converting the existing two-car garage to achieve that, and then we'd be proposing to add on an additional two-car garage and add in a notch where, uh, the bathroom in this suite that I just described, uh, would be located. So, um, with that, um, the, um, I, I'd like to review with the board that the property is particularly suited in that it, it forms an arc along Buttonwood Drive. And there are echelons to the existing ranch house, and the ranch house itself is only seventeen and a half feet in height, very different than some of the other structures in the immediate area. That's significant when you're gonna go to testimony with regard to the variance for exceeding the cap, the four-area cap. Um, particularly because we feel that it is nestled into the existing configuration of a lot. Um, the lot itself is significantly oversized at more than twenty-eight thousand square feet, where eleven thousand square feet is the requirement in the R-ten B zone, so a very significant size lot. Um, we, we will provide testimony this evening through the architect and the, and the planner to show that what we're proposing respects the existing rear yard non-conformities. Um, and significantly, I'd like to review with the board that in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a, there was a gut-to-the-studs interior renovation on the inside, and on the outside, more than five hundred landscaping plants were placed, a hundred trees and four hundred specimens. And I know that because I walked the property this afternoon myself, and if you've driven by, it's fair to say it is beautifully landscaped. I think that's an understatement when I say that, on behalf of the Calistre family, so the su- the significant reason that we're here this evening is that we're, we're exceeding the four-area cap of three thousand two hundred and twenty, posing three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet. Um, also significantly for the applicant's benefit, you'll hear testimony that the other metrics, right, lot coverage, building coverage, and FAR are well within range for the R-ten B requirements, well within range. So with that, Chairman, um, I'd ask that, uh, I place credentials for the architect, James Daley, on record.
Sure, we've accepted Mr. Daley as an expert before, why don't we just briefly?
Very, very good, uh, Mr. Daley, very briefly, formerly licensed architect, first of nineteen ninety.
Have you been testifying for planning and zoning boards in your career?
Yes. Very much, throughout the state of the country.
Including this board?
Correct.
Chairman, any questions about Mr. Daley's credentials?
Thank you, Chairman, board members.
Okay, Mr. Dale, I wonder if you can take a moment, orient the board to, uh, the existing Calistre residents, the beautiful, uh, property that they own, and let's talk about what's proposed in connection with the application this evening.
I'll, I'll do this briefly and then go to the plans, but, because it's a little harder to see on here, but, on, on the color drawing here, the green is the lot, obviously, uh, that's the, the, that's a supplemental on there. Uh, so the tan is, is the existing house, there's a patio on the back. So these dark, uh, red areas, that's the addition, so it's the garage addition, and then this is a small, it's gonna be a bathroom. And then there's a reconfiguration of the driveway, that's the gray here, so, um, that'll be reconfigured. Uh, it's actually gonna be less paving than before, um, but it should be reconfigured. Uh, in order to park cars, all the car will be able to park behind the front yard setback line. So you have a two-car garage along with at least parking for three cars, so probably five cars.
Mr. Dale, tell, tell me about the other lot. Is, is the other lot a separate lot?
It's a separate lot, uh, when I reference the twenty-four thousand square feet. That square footage of the extra lot across the street is not included in that figure.
Okay, so that's
Yeah, we're not including that, yeah.
Okay.
It's just for the board's reference, um, it's also beautifully landscaped, it's maintained as though it were a public park for all purposes.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the Calistres invite neighbors to use it, sits right on the, on the water, again, I walked it, it's beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So that's, that's that part of it, then, uh, it'll be easier to see on the plan. Well, you know, let, let me show you on this before I go to that. So, so we have the two setback issues, so, so the setback here, um,
These are existing, right?
These are existing setbacks, so you have one that's the twenty-six point four, I believe, and one at seventeen. So we are maintaining the existing rear yard setbacks, we're not making them worse, but, um, and, and the existing one's already there, so we're just going along with the the angle of the building already and maintaining those setbacks, so we're not making anything worse there, but they do violate the setback of thirty feet. And then, um, the only other thing is, is the overage on, on your, your cap, your, your square footage cap.
For area cap.
Correct. Everything else makes it, that they are, is in compliance, lot coverage, building coverage. Uh, obviously the height. And then put a plan here. Show you the detail of the answer.
Referring now to sheet A1 of your plans?
Correct. And the darkened walls here, that's the addition, so this is this bathroom addition coming flush with the existing backyard. And that, that's the existing garage, by the way, so the, this is the existing garage right here, this square.
Sorry, when you say the existing backyard, you, do you mean the existing rear line of the house?
Correct, correct.
Sorry.
Where the garage is now.
Thank you.
Uh, and then, so that's the garage that's being converted right here. To the bedrooms, sitting room, and a bathroom. And then this is the attic garage right here, so and this is twisted at a slight angle in order to maintain that, uh, rear setback here, so not make it worse. Um, and, and, and that's essentially it for, for the addition, right? That's, that's the whole thing, right?
Follow-up question to what you just described, now, the ranch personally has three bedrooms?
Correct.
And this would add another bedroom to make a total of four?
Correct.
Could you review with the board the dimensions of the proposed new fourth bedroom?
The new fourth bedroom is eleven by seventeen and a half.
Yes.
It's guess with, with an en suite bathroom that is five by ten, ten. And then there's a small sitting room here, eleven-two by eight foot eleven, and then there's a small music room here adjacent to the garage that is, that's saying eight foot eleven by ten, no.
And those are expressly not intended to be bedrooms, correct?
Correct, they are a closet, they wouldn't fall by as bedrooms under the building cover.
Thank you. Terrific. Um, there was a question as well, Mr. Daley, by recall, from Mr. Rizzo's letter. Is there access to this garage internally through the house, or how would that be?
There is not, and that was requested, felt in the owner that they didn't want that access. I think it's just private here, so the access is to the main door in the back of the garage here, and then you can also go through the doors themselves, you know, the forward end doors. But there's a rear main door here to access the garage.
And will there be a walkway on the front of the garage towards the front side of the?
Correct, they're, they're gonna extend, there's a walkway now coming off this doorway, which is like a side entrance right now, that, there's the main entrance here. Um, and then that'll get extended in order to access.
And that's depicted on the site plan, is it?
Uh, correct.
Terrific. Okay. Can we go through some of the elevations for the board's benefit?
Sure, so if we're on this sheet, let's stay here, uh, this is the front elevation, so here's your front entrance that already exists, everything exists, top to disciples here, you can say, and then this is the attic garage. The new addition will match exactly into the flavor of, and, and materials of the existing house, so there'll be this board and bathroom type look up in the gables. We're gonna use, um, cedar and brightens siding to match what's existing, same, same brand of windows uh, and, and parrot style garage doors, keep the, the look of the existing house. Once this is done, you, you all know the difference between this and the rest of the house, as part of the materials. Uh, just to go for heights, too, the existing house is at seventeen-five, and the new garage will be, uh, the peak is fifteen feet.
Whereas the zone otherwise permits thirty-two feet.
There's the thirty-two feet, correct, as well under the height of it.
Right. Thank you.
Then if we go around to the other, the other two elevations, this is the rear elevation, so the shaded portion here, that's the garage addition. That's your rear main door to access the garage. This shade, wood shade area here, that's where the bathroom addition, they're put to integrate with that. And then, and here, here's the rest of the house here. This is the side addition of the garage, showing the garage doors. Um, just single overhead garage doors. And then the peak, once again, will match the peak of the rest of the house. These are photos here, this is, this is a photo of existing, uh, this is a rendering of the pose right here. And, uh, and this is another shot of the backyard of existing.
Mr. Dale, there were a few more questions, I think, on, uh, Mr. Rizzo's letter, February twenty-third as well. Um, he inquired as to whether there would be a, uh, no fixed staircase to an attic in the proposed garage?
That is correct, uh, all pull-down stair, staircases, so there'll be a pull-down in the garage to access the attic, and there's already an existing pull-down in the, in the house.
Okay. Um, and he inquired whether a drywall system was being proposed for any drainage or there any drainage?
There is not, only because it's, well, it's an oversized lot, it's well under all the, uh, prescribed, you know, lot coverages, so, so the drainage should be fine, given the existing landscaping, you know, uh, permeable, uh, grass area, there's quite a grass around the entire house, so so that's not proposed at this time.
And his other question was whether or not this, um, parking, uh, complied with recess, uh, with the proposed fourth bedroom?
It, it does, it does, a- and, and the ordinance for, for the town here with the the requirement that all parking be behind just front end setbacks.
Perfect. Chairman, board members, no further questions of Mr. Daley at this time.
Um, since there's no access to the garage from the interior of the house, did you consider putting a compliant detached garage on that side of the house?
There was, but, uh, I don't, uh, the, the, actually, the owner was gonna have to answer that part, um, I don't think that was ever considered, no.
Okay. Because you could put a detached garage on that side of the house with the full rear yard, front yard, side yard setbacks. And it's already in this configuration detached from the house, basically, because there's no access from the interior, right?
Correct. Well, no, you, you still, you still would not meet for rear yard setbacks, because you have an existing rear yard setback, don't comply, we're not making it worse, but
Right, but I mean, what you're adding could be thirty feet instead of twenty-six feet from the rear yard. You'd still have your front yard setback, you'd still have your side yard setback, you'd have a detached garage, which for all intents and purposes, you have now, because you don't have access from the inside of the house. And that addition to the property would be compliant, right?
Right.
Okay, and the proposed condition for the rear setback, you have a twenty-six point two feet, which is the rear of the garage that you're adding. But the bathroom over here, you're adding to the seventeen-foot rear yard setback, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it was a little misleading in the proposed condition, on its vote here?
It's okay.
That's all my questions.
So, clarity on the detached, uh, the setbacks are different for detached, so you could push it, put the de- detached closer to the property boundary as a matter of right?
My understanding now is, is that the, um, the, the operation of the cars and the driveway with the detached garage, that made that more difficult. But that's, that was part of the problem. The, for all of them. Because you have a separation between structure, something that, that, to avoid the driveway.
Doesn't really gain anything, because you're not, you're not, you're not having the problem.
I was just asking if it was considered and, and because it would be a compliant structure instead of adding to the, the rear yard setback.
It's not like they're pushing it too far forward, you, you're already well behind the budget, so I don't, you don't know the gain much by pushing it, even though you could.
You, you, you do gain something if the house is getting very long and is occupying sort of a lot of space on the lot. If you were to take that and make that a detachment, push it over to the far corner, what, what are the setbacks, Jordan? Would be ten and ten?
Ten and ten, yeah.
And you would break up the massing of the house, and it, it's a really, it's, that's actually a very interesting idea. The, do you lose anything with regard to the design of the, of the new addition to not have the garage attached?
Well, there's also the option of making it in. I mean, it wouldn't take much to put a, a door on the inside if they want to in the future, if they're just choosing not to at this point, but they're, they're not. They're trying to, they're trying to keep their options open in order to have a door inside at, at a later date.
What's the total length of the structure once you're, you're completed, as opposed, from, if you walk from one end of the building to the other, all the way to the end of the block?
About forty-nine?
If it's stretched out? Thank you, it's about one-fifty, and one, one, one-twenty, a little over one-twenty.
And that's the structure, that's the garage.
That's stretched out, too. Yeah, correct, well, and that's with the garage, yeah.
Looking at A1, the house says one-twenty-two and then twenty-seven foot linear for the new roof.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a, uh, it's good for me to ask you to bring out the, uh, part of the meeting, is there an aesthetic reason to have a garage? Does it you know, attached as opposed to detached?
Well, yes, there is, just to blend it in with the, the same house, and, and there was garage every year. Um, and as I said, they, they do wish to leave the option of a future interior, as it falls. Uh, that would be through that front room, not, it would be through bed.
Here, as I said, uh, in my opening remarks, I think the way the new garage was configured is a function of the lot shape, if you could please bring up the colorized site plan again. So, uh, again, if one approaches the house from the west side on, uh, Buttonwood heading east, um, then if you could refer back to the, the color picture, Jim, in the bottom right of the A1, I think it is.
Right.
Uh, if you could, uh, pull that up, please.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the color picture, sorry, the next one.
That one, no, no. Oh, oh, you mean the picture itself, right?
Uh, bottom, bottom right photo.
Right, right.
So that's the, could you, could you drop the two, right, bring that one forward, please? Thank you, right, the bottom right photo, right? See, that's the view essentially as you're heading east on Buttonwood. So it's, it's and, and again, I walked the site this afternoon, so it's a very unique lot, given its shape and its configuration. And that angle provides a greater depth, and if you will, allows the nestling of that portion that's proposed to be in the back corner of the property as opposed to calling attention, I think, to a, although we didn't discuss it, to a detached garage. I think that's the aesthetic consideration for the board. Um, and it sounds to me like that's something that the, uh, the applicants and their architects went through, uh, pretty extensively. Um, also, Mr. Sacco, yeah, is, is an associate of Mr. Daley's. He's a licensed architect, and I see that he would like to add something, so
I think he's already read. I'm not a licensed architect.
You're not?
Been working for New Jersey licensed architects for forty years. And I was working, uh,
Okay, bring, let, let me swear you in.
Okay.
Mark, you saw me swear the testimony, you give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I did.
Good, can you spell your last name for the record?
S-A-C-C-R.
Just a little background, Chairman, what's your role, Mr. Sacco, in the project, working with the Calistres and working with Mr. Daley?
Uh, well, I was, uh, uh, I had done the, the work previously on a project within the little office, and so, uh, they asked me to, to be involved, and, uh, I brought him on board to work with him. As the licensed architect.
And what were you gonna share with the board about this discussion relating to the sighting of the, of the proposed garage?
Well, what I wanted to say was that, when you put a garage in this back corner now,
You mean the northwest corner?
Yeah, you, you have to pull around around to get in a side entry. Now you can't park here, because you have to pull out and then go down the driveway, so you lose any of your other parking this way. You can pull into the garage and you still have spaces for your, your parking, that's why we didn't go with the uh, which is detached.
What if it faces the street?
Didn't work with the turn lane.
What if it faces the street?
Yeah, but then
You still have to back out.
Then you have to pull in, you're, you're right up against the neighbor.
You lose those two spots in the back pass. And with this configuration, you have less
Yeah.
Coverage.
Less coverage, you have this whole landscape, you're here and, and you actually have more parking.
There's a five hundred less feet of asphalt pavement.
Which is less than what?
Less than what we had.
So I, I just wanna make sure it's clear.
Here's the old drive.
Well, Chairman, the driveway, the current configuration of the driveway is being reduced in size with this proposal.
Okay.
It might not be reduced.
The previous coverage is being increased, just so that's clear, but it's because of the more building coverage.
Less true. So less true. The existing driveway parks like, like a lot of cars, it's not a normal-sized driveway.
And, and it's a normal.
It handles the, for whatever it's worth, it handles the Calistre family's needs. I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure it's clear what we're talking about, though. We're talking about the opportunity to put a conforming two-car garage in that corner versus a variance to attach it to the house, so that's the first thing we're talking about. And so you can explain how, as a practical matter, you think that this is a better design alternative, and that's all fine, but you're triggering a variance versus doing something as a matter of right. The other thing that I think you're discounting is the potential that anybody might think that adding another twenty-five or thirty feet to the length of this house is creating something that is perhaps too big. And so if that's the case, the detached garage gives you, I'm, I'm wondering why you need a garage at all. The, the conversion of the existing The, the conversion of the existing structure into living space, the house is already there, right, you can make one of them. But to now add on the two-car garage that isn't attached, um, it creates a different factor to add on to the proposal. So I understand the resistance to the idea as it's been put out, and I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that you understand that it's important to work it through to understand how you got here, and for the board to be able to evaluate the proofs.
It just seemed like it was worth giving up four feet to make it compliant now to get a driveway that worked. And a garage that worked, where I didn't have to, where I could park in the driveway here.
I'm, I'm having
To pull into the garage.
I'm having trouble with the conclusion that it worked, because you have a lot of space to work with, and so you can configure it in different ways, and I'm confident that you could make it work. You might need additional driveway, that might create a different variance. It might, you might not like it as much, and that's also okay. It might not be as useful.
Right.
All of those are fine arguments. But to suggest it couldn't work, given that you'd be starting from scratch, is something I'm confused by.
So with that, uh, if there are further questions of the architect, we can answer those questions. We also have a planner to provide testimony as to why we think this is a better plan.
So the current house is thirty-two oh one, is that correct?
Current house is yeah, thirty-two oh one, yes.
Okay, so this discussion about upzoning.
Um, we're not having that discussion.
I'd like to have it. So the discussion of upzoning is in the materials. And the reason it's important Ms. Rakens, is because the upzoning concept is a concept that basically says that to the extent that you can meet the requirements of the next side zone, that you can, without coming before the board, um, submit plans and proceed with an application. If you were to upzone, I'm understanding that the lot would conform, is that correct?
That's correct, but we can't because we have the non-conforming conditions on the rear yard setbacks.
Right, and so what I'm struggling with, uh, Ms. Rakens, is that if you were to upzone, what would the cap be for the square footage of the house?
The R fifteen cap still brings us in a couple hundred feet under, as I recall from Mr. Rizzo.
Three thousand four hundred fifty.
So, thirty-four fifty, so we're shy about three hundred fifty.
So the house has been substantially renovated and remodeled, the, the rooms are what they are, and what, what's happened is that we, we want to add a little bit more, and I understand it. But when you look to the R fifteen and try and understand what might be the appropriate size house for this lot in light of the upzoning ordinance, not that you're trying to use it, but rather what would the what would the scale be based on the existing, the, the table seat requirements? It points us to the thirty-four fifty. But we're, but we're several hundred over that in terms of the proposed.
Well, I think, I, I think even with the R, R fifteen upzone, and you're still at three quarters of the size of a lot that we've got, right? Eighteen thousand square feet versus twenty-four thousand change.
Is the minimum.
We're, we're, we're a third bigger than what's permitted in the R fifteen.
Right, but you know, you know that
No, I understand the
The ratio and we have the cap.
Indeed, I do.
So, so I think the challenge in this particular application is the scale of a ranch, which this board does not see a lot. And the issue being that it is low, and, and you've, you've identified that for the board, and it's certainly important. It's a very unique house, it's a very unique lot, it's prominent. It, I, I mean, many, many people drive by this house and walk by this house every single day, and it's, it's, it's beautiful. I, I think that I, I'm connecting to the question of whether or not this garage, not so much the renovation of the interior, because I understand that, that the garage could arguably make this thing really big relative to the size of the overall lot.
So I think that's the threshold question, I think the board has to consider, does it like the aesthetics of a low slum, for want of a better term, two bay garage or a standalone two bay garage? And that's, this case is going to rise and fall on that. So, no, 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 I'm just, I'm framing the issue, I, I agree, that's the issue for you all to consider. Right, ranches by definition tend to, you know, tend to gravitate towards the edges of a property. This property is particularly unique because it has that notch, and because it occupies this extensive frontage, not only on buttonwood, but also on spruce, which I didn't even touch upon that yet. Right, it's got, what's the frontage on spruce? Hundred?
Hundred.
Hundred, yeah. And what's the frontage on buttonwood? You have it on that dimension, on weeks about, uh, right there? Right where your left hand is, go back.
It's a little over one fifty.
Yes, one fifty, okay, so two hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the combined streets, that's a ton of frontage. So when we say, gee, we have a house that's a hundred and twenty feet long, we're adding another two bay garage to it, yes, but we've got two hundred and fifty feet of roof ridge. That's very unusual, right? Very, certainly, I would dare say, without parallel, the R ten B.
It, it's interesting, because, you know, if it were a hundred and twenty-five feet long against two hundred and fifty feet, you'd have seventy-five feet on either setback and you don't, because it's on a turn. And the truth is that you're right, that, that the point is fair, but what's also fair is that it extends all the way around the corner. And as it is, it is much larger than the ranches that remain in the neighborhoods, because it's been added on to separate.
Not to argue, the ranch across the street is kind of monolithic in its facade. Not that I'm a design professional, I'm not. I can only hope to be one, but the way this is broken up with its different echelon and features, it breaks up the massing of what is, again, a very low line, and, uh, not low line, a low slum roof pitch, roof, roof ridge, that's what
And it works, it works right now, right? And then, and then we get to evaluate whether or not it would work with this addition, and whether or not we would look at it and be like, yeah, that makes sense. That, that's the issue.
But the, the thing that I'm listening to is you still have over fifty feet from the new garage to the, to the property line.
Correct, on the side here.
Just my personal opinion, if I were to put a conforming two-car garage ten feet from that property line, I lose that sense of space between the, the attached and the property line, now all of a sudden I have structure there, and I lose the sense of the openness, so.
Well, I, I, to your point, Mr. Chesney, I think what you do is, you see driveway if you have a detached garage.
Yeah.
Whereas with what we're proposing, you see yard.
Yeah.
So that's, I think, a very important plan and consideration for the board as well. So with that, Chairman, may I bring up our planner, Ms. Gregory? Applicant, thank, thank you very much, applicant, applicant, Catherine Gregory, licensed professional planner. As you're getting set up, Ms. Gregory, I wonder if you can share with Chairman and the board members some of your professional credentials, please?
Uh, yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I have been so since the year two thousand. I am the principal of Gregory Associates with offices in Wall, New Jersey, and Fort Lee, New Jersey. Uh, I am a municipal planner myself, mostly urban planning, uh, edge border has precise, uh, premise. Um, and I've testified for the last twenty-four years or so throughout the state of New Jersey on various land use matters. Um, and have been accepted as a resident.
You're a Monmouth County resident?
I am a Monmouth County resident, yes. Oh, and, uh, just a little background, I have a master of architecture and a master of urban planning from the University of Illinois.
Have you testified at Berrier?
No, I have not.
Any questions? Ms. Gregory, what can you tell us about this application from a planning standpoint?
Okay, um, well, we are here tonight for this addition, and we are seeking, associated with that addition, uh, two particular variances, one would be the rear yard variance, and also the, um, the floor area variance, which is distinguished from the floor area ratio variance. So, as was discussed earlier, we are permitted to have three thousand two hundred square feet, and we are proposing three thousand seven hundred fifty-nine square feet over being this for the effort. Uh, just as well, we do have a seventeen-foot setback um, at the point where the new bathroom is being proposed, however, that's actually at the pinch in the lot. Um, so therefore, when you take a look at the site plan, where that particular, uh, variances, we, where the bathroom is, it actually becomes further away from the property line, because the property line is not parallel to where that bathroom is. Just as well, we are seeking a variance for those garage at twenty-eight point two feet, where thirty feet is required. Um, then with that, I would say that in this particular case, uh, that three point something feet, I feel is truly de minimis in terms of, of the naked eye, and just as well, when you take a look at, uh, the photographs that you, uh, your planner is actually providing. You'll see that there is extensive landscaping along that portion of the property. Um, in terms of the variances, uh, we have two types of C variances, the C one, which is some cases of hardship, and that to do with specific uh, for part, I'm sorry, characteristics of a lot. Uh, we've already discussed the fact that this lot is completely irregular in shape. Uh, we are a corner lot, we're not even, um, a corner lot that has a ninety-degree turn. We have an interesting, uh, turn in the fact that we are at the intersection of, um, essentially, well, two streets, but really three streets. And we also have that extensive frontage, as was just discussed, at two hundred and fifty-two feet versus the hundred feet that is required. Uh, so that is two and a half times the minimum requirement in the zone. We also discuss the fact that the lot is very much oversized, it's over two times the minimum lot area requirement. Um, and so when we talk about the, uh, the minimum floor area, um, I think I'm going to go what to the, um, I think the intent of, of what your master plan talked about. And I know that the idea was that you wanted to basically limit the square footage of homes, um, so a lot of the tear downs, because the houses just seem to be a little bit too big for the lots. Um, and that's where the floor area ratio comes in. Um, I believe that this particular site supports this, these variances, because it is oversized, it does have irregular shape, and we are actually only at fifty-seven percent of the floor area ratio. So if you just think about that for a minute, I think that, you know, you have these two regulations, and I understand that you didn't want houses that were too big for a lot. I don't believe this is too big for the lot. If you were to divide this lot into two lots, two ten thousand square foot lots, at a floor area ratio of point two eight, that's twenty-eight hundred square feet for both lots. Um, so then you're coming in with a total massing of fifty-six hundred square feet that could be permitted on this property if it were two lots, but we are only proposing three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. I do understand that there was a discussion about the fact that um, perhaps the house is too long. Now I'm going to get a little bit into my architecture background as well. As you can see, this particular house has a lot of relief on the front of the building. And just like that, also, this particular garage that's proposed is set back from the main structure, it's actually set back into this portion of the property that also has that job. So this becomes very organic in nature, and I think that it is a better planning alternative than a separate garage, which I know was discussed this evening. Because then what you're talking about is now you're putting this double car garage ten feet from another property. And I would think as if, you know, as a neighbor, I prefer not to have a garage ten feet from my property line, I'd rather have the open space. So therefore, I do believe that we also meet the purposes of the municipal land use law under the C two variances, where the benefits outweigh the detriment. Um, in terms of what I just said, I believe that we promote the public welfare, hub, general, sorry, per se. Um, health, safety, morals, and welfare, because I do think it's a better planning alternative to have the garage attached to the house. It is configured in a way that you're not going to be able to see the actual full length of this unless you're literally standing across the street at a, a very particular point, where most people are just driving by, or even if you're walking by, you're never going to see the entire house in and of itself separate, as a portion right across the street. And we also have an empty lot across the street. Um, I also believe that we promote purpose C, which talks about providing adequate light, air, and open space. Um, obviously, I believe there's better light, air, and open space with this than there would be from a detached garage. Um, I also believe that we promote purpose I, which talks about promotion of a desirable visual environment, in my opinion, because this house, while it does have um, set, uh, additions that I've done over the years, I go back to that word organic, it appears that the house has really grown organic on the property to fit the property, like, you understand we need a variance. And it's mostly because we have this, we have this weird job back here, uh, that necessitates for this existing portion of the, of the, the the, the existing garage, excuse me, right now. Um, so I believe that we do promote a number of the purposes of the municipal land use law. Uh, when I talk about the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good um, or substantial detriment, uh, to the zoning plan or zoning ordinance. I'd like to, actually, I'm going to try to hand out to the board. Um, so how many do we need to mark this?
We do, I think we're up to, uh, A eleven.
Okay. A eleven.
Can you describe that, Ms. Gregory?
Yes, certainly. If anyone can pass it down, uh, what this is, is a copy of, uh, the tax map for the part named question. Uh, the title of it is lots of homes greater than three thousand two hundred and twenty square feet as permitted in the R ten B zone. It's prepared by myself, and please forgive the rudimentary nature of this, it was sort of, um, something I thought of last minute, I need to get that right.
Where's the data taken from?
This is from the tax map. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, from the tax records. Yeah, from the tax.
You know, they're notoriously unreliable.
Yeah, but then, then this absolutely can't be right, the, the, the new houses that were constructed behind didn't get variances, they're fully conforming.
Okay, well, based off, based on the records.
The records are notoriously in, in. We've been down this path many times.
Well, let's, but
Okay, well, you know what? Let's put it this way. I'm, I'm just going to go through the lot sizes, um, and the dwelling sizes on these particular lots for the the data that I found, and what I can tell you is that if the data isn't exact, I, um, would say that it is probably very close. Um, but with that said, um, okay, so, uh, I've identified PQ for our property, um, and going forward, um, on lot sixteen, which is, uh, to the left, uh, the dwelling is three thousand four hundred and forty square feet, uh, but that happens to be on a ten thousand four hundred and fifty-four square foot lot.
That's new construction in that one, that tall one?
Is that new construction?
If you know.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't recall every, every single house.
I, I believe it's that one. I believe that's new.
Just don't believe that house got a variance. Not for variance, so it can't be thirty-four and change.
But, well, it's okay, she's, she's testifying that that's what the records show, and that's just a separate issue, but it's certainly baffling.
Okay, uh, with that said, lot seventeen, um, the records show that there's a three thousand six hundred and sixty-four square foot dwelling on a twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-six square foot lot. Lot eighteen is showing to have a three thousand three hundred and fifty-six square foot dwelling on a twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-six square foot lot. Uh, lot twenty is showing to have a three thousand six hundred and fifty-four square foot dwelling on a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot. I'm going to block seventy-one, which is to the right. Lot nine is showing to have a three thousand six hundred and seventy-five square foot dwelling.
Sorry, what was that number again, apologies?
Three thousand six hundred and seventy-five square foot dwelling on a fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-six square foot lot.
House is also brand new, and I believe did not get a, been completely got a variance.
Uh, uh, block six C. Uh, lot six shows to have a four thousand one hundred and one square foot dwelling on a fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-six square foot lot.
Also fully conforming, no variance on the house. I, I don't know how many of these numbers are on there.
Yeah. The only one I recall is lots, uh, lot seventeen on Lincoln. Uh, that's that Garry St. Colonial, that we did, we did give a variance for that one, yeah. That was about eight, nine minutes, but.
Okay, well, based on the data, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good uh, for the fact that the house is comparable to lot sizes in the area. I also believe there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, mostly for the reasons that I stated. Uh, we are a significantly oversized lot. Um, we, if we were to be divided into two lots, we could have fifty-six hundred square foot of floor area, but we are only proposing to have a little over thirty-seven hundred. I also believe that we do promote, as I stated earlier, a few of the goals and objectives of the master plan, uh, which I will get to in a moment. Sorry, I went back to my data page, so now here we are, okay. All right. Um, under the land use recommendations of two thousand sixteen master plan reexamination and master plan update, it was stated It was stated that the size of new and expanded homes continues to threaten the character of neighborhoods. A simpler alternative mechanism for effectively controlling bulk in the neighborhood should be developed and adopted. Such a mechanism should be calibrated to reflect the appropriate intensity for each zone. Regulation through floor area ratio as opposed to the current used um habitable floor area ratio provide a simpler, more easily regulated means to protect residential and non-residential neighborhood character. Um as I stated earlier, we are compliant and in fact only fifty-seven percent uh floor area ratio that is permitted in the zone. I think that is a significant fact. Um and we also align with the two thousand five objectives that were further reinstated in two thousand sixteen master plan and reexamination. Uh which is to protect and enhance the existing character of the borough and the residential quality of the neighborhoods. Um I do believe that we are still protecting and enhancing the character of the neighborhood with this design. Um and the quality of this neighborhood with this specific design. I do believe that the benefits do outweigh the detriments for the reasons that I've stated. Um and I'm happy to answer any questions associated with this application.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Your question? Well, I just, I I I got lost because it seemed to me that you missed your C one and C two. Can you articulate, I mean, what the hardship is to build a conforming garage?
There there is no hardship per se, but we do, what I've talked about was the unique conditions of the lot. But I did talk about how I believe that it's rooted in the C two where the benefits outweigh the detriments. So I talked about the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. I believe that it's a better planning alternative, a better design alternative than having a separate garage. Yeah, because there is more light, air, and open space to the adjacent neighbor, and I would think that, I mean, I don't know if neighbors are here, but.
I get the C two, I get the C two.
Oh, then scratch the C one.
Yeah, I don't think we'd argue on a C one basis.
Well, I I I heard her say, I think it means to see one criteria C two, I didn't see that, if you're just saying C two, fine, thank you. I, I mean, I I don't have a vote, it doesn't matter.
Scrobat, you've carefully guided the board in my experience.
Charming, charming, Mr. Anything else, any question? Nope.
So we're uh, we're at the point where I think uh, well, I know typically we don't have straw poles given by the board, since there has been some consideration and discussions with parts of alternative that might not require new variances as an accessory structure. I'd appreciate some guidance from the board as to, so so that we're not on the road to a denial here if we need to amend the plan. And I don't even know if that's acceptable to the clients, and certainly we'd wanna chat with them, but just I'm looking for the board's feedback as to, you know, attached or detached. That's what it comes down to, ladies and gentlemen, yeah.
I mean, what, are you done with your case, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we're open to the public, before we have any discussion. Are there any members of the public that have any questions or comments with regard to this application? I'll direct the flag now. Um. Well, so I think that what we should do, Mr. Akins, is I think that if if you're done, I I think the board should deliberate. And I think that if during the board deliberation, uh you wanna ask for five minutes, then you should interrupt us and tell us.
Will do.
Uh so are you, are you completed? Did you wanna say anything and wrap up?
I'm completed, thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Rizzo, do you have any comments with regard to um the application, anything with regard to the garage location or any of the other things you talked about?
Um I think the one consideration um for the board is you know, obviously an attachment be accessory, um but at the end of the day, it's still a structure, so I think you just need to outweigh. You know, compliant versus not compliant, but also the overall impact um surrounding neighbors as well.
Yeah, look, the 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 issue about the surrounding neighbors is those houses have just gone up, like to thirty-two, thirty-six feet. Because of the fact that they are jacked up out of the ground. And all the landscaping that's gone in recently has been put in to try to mitigate some of that. But the truth is that, yeah, I could make an argument that there wouldn't be anything better than a building between those new houses and this house to create that separation. I'm not a designer, but 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 my comment to all of you is there does come a time where adding things in a line becomes too much. And so it isn't so much the overall size of the house, I recognize the arguments, although I'm not at all persuaded by the suggestion that because there's larger houses in the neighborhood, that this is consistent, because we haven't heard any of those facts. We know that those numbers are wrong, and I just don't understand that, that that line of thinking. But nevertheless, I I think the house looks really nice the way it is, it's 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 really nice, it's truly exceptional. And as someone who also lives in a ranch, I recognized the value of having ranches still in the neighborhood, there's no question about that. I can't tell you for sure whether or not when this is constructed, we're gonna look at it and be like, that's too much, it's gone too far. And if it were detached, which they can do as a matter of right, I would never have to ask myself that question, because we wouldn't have granted appearance to it.
Um. May I interrupt, Chairman? So sometimes there is an architectural technique where uh you frame out or provide some kind of an example as to the you know, the the balloon, if you will, of a proposed addition, just for your consideration.
Thank you. Like, so so, you know, I'm good, I I just kinda wanted to provide, usually talk, trying to talk last when we deliberate, but I just wanted to add some context for kinda the way I see it.
I mean, personally, I think it's better to buy them in taps, I think it's tucked back away from the front corner of the house by, I don't know, maybe ten feet, if my eyes are, my eyes are terrible, um and I don't think you're gonna get that sense. I get what you're saying, the more you go across, I think if it were in line with the front side of the house, I may think different. But because it's tucked back and because it's around a bend, I don't think it draws attention to itself. Um I'm not a fan of the detached garage as a whole in the whole area. Um and I think putting more structure on the left there, you lose that, like I said before, you lose that open area, and I don't wanna lose that open area. And plus functionality, this was, this is a better design function, gives you the option of going into it from the house. Um detached garage is just, it's just something sitting there that 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 doesn't get used, and and I think this is a better.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
I agree, and to the chairman's point, we might look at this, if we expand it out and say, uh, we could put the detached garage and look at it and say, eh, maybe we shouldn't have done that. I agree with Peter on a lot of points, you know, I think it's a very nice design. I also like that it's keeping in the nature of a ranch, which is historic uh building in burrows. Ranches and federal colonials and capes, so to keep that ranch classic, I think it really, you know, what we should be striving for, because as we know, there are a lot of houses uh in that area that have been blown up. And they have gone up, and if we can keep something low and in the historic nature of that neighborhood, I think it's important.
I couldn't agree more, this house has already been gut renovated, just so you know, so there really is not the potential economically to divide this and create two houses, but I do understand what you're saying, and I do believe as a rancher uh that we need to support.
And you know, you're in a ranch and I'm in an expanded cape, and I live in this general neighborhood, and I love to see the houses keep their historic nature.
For sure, it was great to see this one get gut renovated as it did.
I mean, I I asked the question about the detached garage, because I'm always looking for a compliant option for what's being added. And that's one, the other is that they've already shifted this structure maybe a few feet forward from what it's attached to on the house. And whether that could come another four feet forward, still be attached to the house, and still be compliant. Uh you know, I gotta wonder why that's not an option. Um living on a lot that's fifty feet wide with a new seventy-foot wide house across the back of my backyard. I'm sensitive to the width of this house. This is already a hundred and twenty-two feet long, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty feet long.
Back in a second, you're saying shifted four more feet forward to meet the thirty foot in the back?
Yeah.
Just to make it more compliant, but it would.
It wouldn't be that much, it it would be less than six feet forward from the fa- the face of the existing garage. Um that's, I'm just saying that's my head looking for compliant option.
That that wouldn't be without its negatives.
It it is what it is.
Yeah.
But it, they would be negatives that would not require variance.
I I also just wanna correct the numbers, I don't remember exactly what they are, but I heard a gasp from the audience, I don't think it's a hundred and fifty feet long.
It's a hundred and twenty-two plus, uh there's twenty-two and change plus.
Is that right? I just wanna make sure it is being accurate.
But I'm measuring, it's approximately a hundred and fifty feet long.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, no, go ahead.
No, but just back to your form, like, you know, the house appearing behind you in this thing. You know, with this house, if you keep garage where it is, if we move it to where it's compliant, it's now up against six, uh lot sixteen and seventeen. So now you have a house, a garage, a structure that was never there, and you know, living in this neighborhood, that's a pretty open area as it is now.
Street, across the street facing this is is another house, they're talking about the empty lot there that's part of their property. But just to the left of that, facing this, where the additional length is gonna be, is another house that faces this lot. Would you rather see a longer house stretching out towards your view? Or would you rather see maybe some green on both sides of a of a detached room?
Is it, I'm just. I still think it'd be considerable green on either side. If you put the garage in that back corner, I think it's going to be, where I think there's plantings and, you know, as they said, there was a lot of plantings.
Disappearing there.
Lots of plantings, it's, or it's gonna be, there's a garage.
Well, and so I just wanna say, if if you pull the garage out and they just wanted to do the house and no garage, I think this is relatively straightforward.
Oh, yeah.
Because, because the house exists, because I think that the, it it's thirty-seven plus, I mean, it's 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 greater than the next zone. When you move up to R twenty, just for the sake of clarification with regard to the planning testimony, you don't get to continue to use the two-point-eight. With point two-eight, you now go to point one-eight, it's not half, not not even close. It it's 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 not, it's not a small house on the lot when you look at it under the right numbers. But if you were to remove the garage altogether, it's a lot easier for me, and I don't know the right answer. And and I don't know that we need to have a better answer, because.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that either of these are a better answer, I'm saying that these are additional options that are compliant.
So so, and that's true, but I heard, but I heard one, two, three people that sounded positive on what we had, we haven't yet, versus Mr. Richwell.
Yeah, I would agree um with what Peter and Sherry and Paul have stated. Um. And I know we're talking about the length of this property, but it's not a straight line. In fact, I I don't see if yours on the one, I I look, if you look at the proposed front of elevation. You know, you you think, wow, this is long, but if you look at the proposed plan in the way I I believe things are designed and staggered, I think it would be very difficult to even see this new car garage um from the one corner of the property.
So that's, so so the saving grace, to the extent they have one, right, you almost need to go across the street and look at it, and you can get it. But you almost can't get it from the road, uh to the extent that it it's gonna work, and I've said I just don't know. But it it's gonna be for that reason, because you're gonna come down buttonwood and it's gonna look sized appropriately. And you're gonna come down spruce and it's gonna look size appropriately.
Yeah, you see that.
And you're never gonna see the whole thing, and it it's possible that it works because of that, it's fair.
And it's gonna be much more appropriate than other things.
Yeah. Well, and and I know Al mentioned the property across the street, who's now looking at something that is of of this mass, I think the way things were set back to is a is a positive.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe across the street, and and I think that the the detached conversation um you know, puts you in the corner, puts you ten feet off of those property lines, I think that's probably not a negative for the homeowners on those adjac- adjacent lots.
You think it's not an area?
Yeah, I know, I think it is, I'm sorry, that is a negative.
I mean, it doesn't, and so just, that will, that, it doesn't have to be ten feet off of that property line, it has to be at least ten feet off that property line. There there could be a a gap the size of the proposed garage between the house and 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 the detached garage, and you're going to have more light, because here you're, and it's it's a hundred and fifty feet long.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what's gonna happen with the range, I mean, you know, to to an extent, that's just part of it. Um, look, I I wanted to try and figure out where we were, because we've got six, you're gonna need four, sounds to me like you have four. I certainly know that I don't know for sure either way, but it sounds like you've got, sounds like you've got the four. Um and so I think if you all agree with that, I think you can make a motion. We 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 haven't spoken about the interior, is anybody?
No, I mean, I don't have any issue with me into, and and it's essentially just taking over the space that was there, right?
Yeah, there's a small addition for the, for the bathroom.
Oh, but but you're ju- you are just maybe to seventeen feet, I I honestly, I think it's five feet wide, it's not. The exterior of the dish. All right, are we good?
Yeah.
Well, then I'll make a motion to accept the property plan as submitted, uh given accuracy the uh of of the measurements.
Well, that was really bad.
I, for my best. Yes.
This is DeAngelo, yeah. Mr. Richwell.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shandale?
No.
All of a sudden, congratulations.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we very much appreciate the plural discussion.
Thank you. Breaking wrap. You have two more applications, so Mr. Akins, I'm gonna ask you to try and get your group quiet, they can exit.
Yes, sir.
We're in here for the Thompson application, please.
Something over here. No, that would say, that's all I do.
Oh, okay.
All right, good evening. Oh, thank you.
For sure, I don't think they ever do the project, did they? Okay. So, and we can find that we have jurisdiction on this matter?
Yeah.
I ask that anybody that's going to testify on this matter, please stand. Raise your right hand, you saw me swear the testimony again, before the board, the whole truth, talking about the truth. Same directions they gave before through the audience, before you started speaking. Spelling your name, purposes of the record, so that we know who saw it from the top of your tongue. Um, marks and exhibits. Mission. Uh A one is the zoning board of assets, zoning board of adjustment application, A two is land development application checklist. A three is the architectural site planning for financial evasions. Uh it's like they revised to May seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
A four, survey of the property, it's like that was revised December nineteen, twenty twenty-three. A five, zoning permit denial, and I'm like, zoning officer dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. A six are color images of the dwelling that we leave there, the third of seven. Uh A seven is list of variances and variables requested, and state the variables for the various applications kind of dated. I believe we also have in the market as ZB, zoning board one, that's gonna be reported with the signature of Mr. Rizzo. I mean, that's December first, twenty twenty-three, we also have a second report, uh ZB two, that's May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any other exhibits that you may have?
Yes, all additional, um just some additional photos for the board.
Excellent, A, A, how many photos you total?
Uh four, uh four photos, one, one sheet.
One sheet, are are there dates to those or approximately times?
Uh two, I think were from in, I believe it was, it was the fall, and then two are from uh who were, but they appeared exactly.
Within the year.
Uh. The Google or the ones hard part said, but it.
Nothing exactly, yeah. Okay, and yeah, that would be marked A, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I think we have, we're gonna have some initial waivers.
We do, I'll run through that quickly. Um. First one is ownership disclosure statement, which was requested, um which is not applicable, given that it is a residence here. Uh the three outside agencies, Monmouth County Planning, Field SCD, and Monmouth County Health Department. Um to the extent they're required, it'll be submitted, but at this point, it's fairly required. And then the last one is copies of all these means, covenants, deed restrictions. Um and again, if that was applicable, they would be submitted, but.
Um and again, if that was applicable, they would be submitted, but. So I don't take any exception to these. Business waivers being.
Okay. Anyone on the board, any questions or concerns about the proposed waivers?
Robert Thompson, T H O M S O N, born.
Well, I mean, whoever's gonna testify, it's only at the beginning of your testimony, so what it was recording, so we know who's speaking.
Yeah, put your name on.
Elector, D O L, and owner.
And then Alex Chisias, architect, last name S H I, S S I, what is?
Mr. Chisias, you're gonna be uh testifying with regard to your expertise in architecture?
Yes, correct.
Ever been approved as an architect by this board?
Yes.
How recently?
Uh I think one month ago.
Yeah, about so. Anybody gonna give your turn to Mr. Chisias over the last month?
Alright, thanks, sorry, I lost my voice last week, so I'm like eighty percent, bear with me. So Colette and Rob have lived in a Dutch colonial for what about twenty years now?
Yeah.
And for a while, they've been planning, doing some upgrades, modernizing the floor plan. Doing an addition and and now come the time where the grade and do so. So I'll, can I start by the architectural design?
What I really think we should do is Mr. Chisias is get a handle on exactly what variances are triggered, I know there was a lot of confusion over this.
Yeah.
I know that the new um changes to the ordinance tripped you up with regard to the basement, let's talk that through.
Correct.
Make sure we know exactly what would be an estimate.
Yeah, so what happened through the floor area, the existing first floor, a survey was requested by the town, which was good. Because it showed that the floor area was just under four inches, the up, just under four inches over the thirty inch limit. Of being beyond the average grade, so the average grade taken from the four corners of the house. When you do the distance between that measurement and the finished first floor elevation. If it's over thirty inches, the basement counts only toward the floor area. So that was not anticipated and that added to the floor area, so that was one inch.
So hold on, so let's just slow that down, we're looking at your zoning, I'm looking at your zoning table right now.
Yeah.
And so just as to the floor area, I see that the requirement, what are we in, our our town?
Yeah, our town.
Okay, so at the floor area ratio of point two eight, your max sat of twenty one hundred. The cap is otherwise thirty two twenty.
Right.
With regard to existing, you're showing it point three four. And at twenty six hundred, that includes the basement?
That includes the basement.
And then you're proposing to go to point four oh six?
Correct.
Three oh four eight and that includes basement?
Correct.
That includes the existing basement, but no new basement.
No new basement, so I want to propose crawl space. Actually, it's existing crawl space, okay.
So the new addition has no basement?
No basement.
So there's no impact on these numbers, what, tell us about the basement so we can just deal with that right away?
Yeah.
And I want you to translate these numbers once you pull that out so that the board can understand.
Yep, so the existing basement is a pretty low ceiling, uh I had it measured at six to four. So it is used, it is finished. Um but it's it's not an input basement or anything like that, again, nineteen thirty, the Dutch colonial, you can kind of imagine a finished basement, what that would be like. So that that's what the basement is, that basement when added per the diagram upfront. Again, it's varied in measures to the outside of the outside wall, so the outside of the foundation wall, that adds seven hundred and eighty two square feet.
Okay, so this is really critical, so seven hundred and eighty two square feet is the existing basement, you're not expanding the basement. So your existing house, I'm looking at your zoning table, is a minus seven, what is it, seven one?
Okay, seven.
Basement size.
Oh, six foot four.
No, no, not the height.
Oh, seven eighty two.
Seven eight two?
Yeah.
Seven eight two.
Yeah.
So then if the board wanted to evaluate first and the second floor and not focus on the basement. You would take in terms of the existing structure, the twenty six oh nine, and you would take out the seven eighty two.
Correct.
So you've got eighteen twenty seven existing?
Yep.
As of a year ago, before we changed the news.
Correct.
And then it as for what you're proposing, you're proposing three zero four eight?
Yeah.
That number is gonna wind up be two two six six?
Correct.
That's what's actually being proposed.
Yeah.
Do all the board members understand the issue with regard to the basement and how we got here and how they got caught up in that?
Yeah.
Everybody understand the delta there is four inches and the focus of that is new basements and not existing basements. Does anybody like hearing this because I think we're gonna find that we're gonna get people to get caught up in that.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
The path that you're going down. If you were to extract the basement from the calculation, the floor area ratio would still be point three zero.
So that's fantastic, thank you very much.
It's in excess.
Point what?
It's still point three zero.
Point three zero.
So it's still a D variance condition?
And the and the requirement in the zone is point two eight and we know because where we started, that when we go point two eight over this lot, because it's small. Twenty one hundred square feet would be the max.
So they're always requesting the D, um it was just a technicality to show it this way.
And I'm gonna button that up by saying that twenty one hundred will be the maximum square footage based on point two eight. And so the twenty two sixty six, exactly one hundred and sixty six square feet over, what the floor area ratio would tell us is the most you could put on this thing.
Yes. If we know where you are, the other issue was the stories and I think there's. I have a different interpretation, but we were conservative in renoticing to say that we were adding a three story, a proposed three story structure. Because of the basement definition being beyond at thirty inches, it counts as a ha- a half story. Then we have the first floor, second floor, well, the structure without the basement is two and a half. Plus the basement for that thirty inch definition, add another half. So the existing house technically is a three story structure. The addition is, and I'll get into this, we're not actually building a new crawl space, including the existing. But where we're proposing the second floor addition, that's a crawl space, so that does not contribute to the stories. The addition is by by ordinance, I would say it's two stories. Because uh it it's not, uh most, most of the second floor is gonna be cathedral. So if whatever, whatever way you look at it, the addition would be at most two and a half stories, I would consider it a two story addition.
So how is the existing attic used right now in the existing house?
Unfinished, unconditioned.
Hold down staircase or fixed staircase?
Pull is pull that hatch, I'll pull that on my nap, I gotta, no, it's a hatch, I gotta bring an eight foot ladder in and climb up.
Oh, that's super convenient. So and in the addition, there's no attic per se, you're proposing to vault ceiling, and so we're all included in the second story?
The addition is mostly vaulting in the bedroom area, there is gonna be a closet and a master bed. That will technically have a small, not usable in many way, but a small kind of leftover frame. Also, that's where maybe you could call it the half store.
So does everybody understand that the story issue is also caught up in this four inch issue relative to the grade of the basement and the elevation?
But it's uh, Mr. Chisias, you do have a fixed staircase in the proposed condition.
Yes, so that's to access the existing attic. Uh Mr. Thompson would like to, even though it's very low height, and I'll get into that, would ideally like to finish it as a small office space. Just make some use out of it, also easier for storage. So we're proposing adding a a stair that's gonna stack with the existing stair below. The height uh is under six feet, I think it's six three to the top of the ridge and the ridge is maybe four or six inches deep, and that's at the peak.
I can't stand up.
Okay.
In the at the apex of the. So I'd like to just clarify to record and make it as any condition that the attic in the proposed condition would never exceed. Seven feet unless a compilation is provided.
So I want to understand, so so the new ordinance is while it catches you up on the four inches, it also gives you flexibility to use the attic space and it doesn't count. That's only if it complies with certain requirements with regard to the third and and whatnot. That would it as proposed conform to the requirements with regard to a usable attic?
It's a half story attic, uh and it doesn't count towards floor.
So the half story catches us back up in what we're doing with the basement. But what I'm wondering is, is there anything irregular about that attic space? I look, I'm very sensitive to the idea that I am, I am intentionally putting weight on the four inches with the basement because your numbers are huge. And so everybody needs to understand that from go, but at the same time, I don't wanna be taking advantage of the attic thing. And missing the fact that we may not otherwise comply with what the requirements are in the attic, you know what I'm saying?
Given that it's not below seven, that no, it's not seven feet.
Well, that alone isn't it, so it 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 is, it is that height and then it's the the pitch, the roof. And it's only the third in the middle, so we comply with that?
So there's been no floor plan provided for the attic, it's just noted on the plan that it doesn't exceed seven feet.
I had not done a calculation yet, I suspect it it does meet that, most roofs of this style of architecture do fall under that thirty percent.
Well, with the Dutch colonial, right, so it may, it may be taller and and it's important because you can't, you can't. Focus, I'm focusing on it for you, but I trust you want me to, as to the basement, but and then take advantage of the attic. I realize that it's a very low height and you're reusing it, it's there, but I just think we need to know whether or not that number should be in there or not, but you don't, you don't know?
I don't know for sure, um I I I highly suspect it's not. I could follow up with that information.
Well, I I really hurt me out right now, the uh the heights, is it, is the max seven three? Or that it's one third at seven?
Yes.
And so if everything is lower than that, does that mean that it would have to comply?
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
Comply meaning it's a half story, it does not count as floor area. It does have.
Oh, that's what you were saying?
Yeah, it does have a fixed.
Did you answer my question five minutes ago?
Yeah, I didn't, I really understand the next part of the question was, but.
Thank you, Jordan, okay.
It it's a, it counts towards the story, it doesn't count for.
Okay, thank you for going down that route with me.
Okay.
So and so what I said was, as part of any condition, I would like to clear that in the future it will not be expanded to greater than seven feet. Without further evaluation.
That it will be tethered to this structure. Right.
So that's, that's for the two variances that were affected by the updated codes from a year ago.
It's stories and it's the total square footage.
Yes.
And and specifically floor area ratio.
Yes, the basement contributing versus not.
Got it, what else you got?
Want to go over existing variances or just no?
Don't tell us about preexisting nonconformity because they're grandfather.
Okay.
But exacerbations can.
Yep. So um I'll go down these, uh minimum front yard setback, thirty feet's required, existing is nine point four. And we're talking about from Glenn, not from Forest, Forest, it's actually right at thirty, so it conforms from Forest on the narrow lot. The wide lot portion of the of the lot, Glenn, i- it's nine point four and that's measured to the front step. Uh I think else to consider uh that the front porch is set third back in that by a couple feet. The uh.
Sir, is it six point six?
Six point six to the proposed, yeah, nine point fours exist and six point six to the proposed set.
Alright, so let's just tease that out a little bit, please, because this is really.
Yep.
There there's not a lot of room here, the existing house is eighteen five to the to the property now, right?
Correct.
And the covered porch and the stairs create um. Encroachments into that front yard setback even further, which takes you to where?
So the porch, the proposed porch would go down to eleven point five?
I wanna know the existing first.
Existing, we double check this.
I don't think that number's on.
Existing is eleven. Proposed is six point six.
Existing to the steps is nine point nine, I think I have that.
Well, so it would be the face of the second.
What's that?
It would be the face of the second, so I think that's the eleven.
And it would be, yeah, correct. Uh to the to the covered porch structure, not included in the steps, uh is right around fourteen, maybe a little more. And to the actual house itself will be eighteen point five.
How deep is porch?
Existing porch is.
No, 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 I'm talking about the proposed.
Proposed porch is seven. On the Glenn Place side.
How did you decide to make seven, well, what is it on Forest?
Forest is eight or roughly eight, because that this just lines up with the existing summer, I think that was original to the house.
Yeah.
So the idea was to measure that, align that up. And then we want, the idea is it's gonna be usable porch as well as an aesthetic feature.
Yeah.
But six feet with the railing, that's, I have that in my house, it does get tight, that extra foot starts to feel.
Did you design that?
No, getting rid of it.
Yeah, um but you, how tall is this front porch proposed to be off the grade?
Yeah, do you need a rail?
By by eighteen inches without it. It's more than one nine.
I would say it'd be a little more than three and a half feet. Maybe, maybe three and a half.
I think by code you need around three feet.
Yeah, definitely would need around, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So you need a front yard setback on Glenn Place?
Yep, for six point says thirty feet's required. Uh minimum side yard setback, there's only one because it's a corner lot, so that's for the property adjacent on Forest. Uh ten feet's required, five point two is existing, and we're exacerbating that, extending out. Uh again, the one story portion is already there, we're proposing to rebuild that, this construction is a little shouty. Uh but also going up a second floor, so it'd be extending that five point two.
So the the survey shows five point two at the rear corner, but it shows five four at the front on Forest, is that, is that five four the existing?
About five, those are actually multiple survey measurements, there must be a slight skew.
This, okay.
So five two seem to be the most narrow.
Okay, there's an existing one story porch in the structure there. That's there, they're putting the second, they're rebuilding that, put a second story on top.
Correct, keeping the foundation.
So you're going up.
And while we're talking about this, do you have the the measurements from the from Sullivan's house? What they are is setback to Glenn.
Yeah, so that was added to the survey per request of the uh Mr. Rizzo.
Um Sullivan or Jones?
Sullivan.
Sullivan's on the backside.
They're they front on Lake, but their house is, their house is situated in a similar way, their both, both lots line up the same way. And their step back is very slight as well.
Yes, I I have an aerial, you can see it's very close.
You don't have that number?
What's that?
You don't have that number?
We don't have it on the survey, I mean, I can take it from a, from an aerial.
It's your best work.
I it's not that I don't know how to get that on the survey, I mean, I guess we could expand the survey.
Which which lot are we in?
We're talking about the corner on Lake in Land.
So the Sullivan lot, so the Sullivan lot was subject to an approval by this board, which was subsequently denied on appeal. Overtaken on appeal, subsequently came back and was approved uh for a very similar uh uh renovation. And I don't believe that they did any work on the first or maybe the second floor extended in this way. But it's situated similarly to where you are and it puts this proposal in context.
Yeah.
If they had it.
They they haven't started construction yet uh on that second.
They didn't do any of that?
Uh hundred ninety thousand dollars to put that, so. He's trying to make everything uh work out like that.
Thank you, another frog, would you talk for me?
And I mean, from the aerial, I I would, I would estimate it's probably about four feet off from the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is maybe two feet past the property, I, it's probably less than four or five feet from the property line.
I think it's four point four.
I really don't think you got enough that.
Yeah.
But 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 I think it would be really good to know.
Yeah. So uh the other neighboring setback, and this is why I thought we were referring to the first. The neighbor on Forest, this is one of the variances. Distance between principal structures on adjacent lots to uh is twenty four feet minimum. Uh or existing at fifteen point one, and then if you take a diagonal measure to where the supposed addition would start, that's seventeen point four.
I'm sorry, I spaced that, so you have the, you have this, what what was the last one you just covered?
So the uh distance between neighboring properties on different lots, made neighbor and principal structures.
Yeah.
Is twenty four minimum, we're currently at fifteen point one. And then technically where our addition starts, because there's an angle to it, seventeen point four.
So you're exacerbating that that preexisting nonconformity?
Yes.
Why? It's building on the existing footprint.
Well, we're going up. So because we're going up, technically it's within that twenty four feet.
Fifteen point one exists, so the structure today.
Fifteen one.
And the the second story addition is seventeen point four, so it's not any closer, it's just going vertical.
Fifteen one's measured like, not here, and then yeah, the hall.
I I'm not sure that 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 requirement's three dimensional like that, but okay, okay. But you are, just to clarify, because we haven't let you really start yet, you you're actually building on top of an existing foundation, so the footprint settlement.
Yes.
To what you're proposing to do.
Yep.
And you're demolishing the first floor, rebuilding two stories up.
Yeah.
The porch is new, the proposed porch is new.
Correct.
And that's what you got, front wraparound porch, reconstruction of a one story porch for the house.
Long caveat there, it's the second floor additional proposed, we can't leave her out, hold for some additional dimension in the master suite. Also, it gives some architectural interest. Both for some additional dimension in the master suite. Also, it gives some architectural interest. But.
What's the panel labor?
Uh, it's two feet. Uh, it's fine, yeah.
Sure. Do you think that we can find, um, the Sullivan survey? From the Sullivan matter, do you think you can put your hands on it? Would you mind looking for it? I, I think it's extremely relevant to understand where they are relative to Glen Place.
Forty-seven Lake, I have the resolution. My resolution says four point one feet.
It could be.
Yes, seventy feet required, the front long plan three hundred fifty side yard setback efficiency of four point one from the southern property. Till eleven point nine from both sidelines.
The north, it's the north.
And this says southern, I'm just reading the, Mr. Irene.
But that's where they put the addition on, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, the main house faces.
Yeah, let's wait.
She'll find it, she'll find it.
Okay.
Tell us about the house.
Before we finish off on the variances.
Oh, they got more?
Uh, hold on, maybe, maybe we went through it. Floor area, number of stories, minimum dis- oh, park. Um, the parking technically right now, there's two spaces provided, but they're not beyond the front yard setback. Um, so that's also, so that's existing, but because we're going from a three-bedroom structure to a four-bedroom. Technically, it's triggering that as well.
You're not proposing to change that garage?
No.
Not proposing to change that driveway?
No.
You're not proposing to add any more parking spaces?
No. The garage, by the way, is of a dimension, it's really just a storage shed. They do park, we talked about it, typically they'll park two side by side, they also use street parking. Uh, on occasion, they have it, or when needed, it's tight, but right now, from what you guys have said, it's serving what their needs are.
And we can also back two cars in, uh, nose to, to the bumper, uh, into the garage and we have to.
Okay, so as far as, that covers the, the additional or post variance that's over here.
You want to stop now and talk about Sullivan?
Sure.
So Sullivan shows. So the records can reflect that we're looking at a survey by Charles Bell. Will mark it as. Wait, dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty. For forty-seven Lake Avenue, lot fifteen, lot twenty, this is Sullivan application from twenty twenty. Um, so the Sullivan. Okay, so as I remember the Sullivan application, little conjecture here, I think that their additions are on the inside of the lot. But the house is already two stories and straight up. If you haven't been down there recently, um, it's two-story old sort of. I don't know what style it is. What is it, Fera? That was what I wanted to say, no. Um, seven four, seven, seven one from the street, but it's two stories and it's straight up. It's, it's significant and it's been there forever. Yep. Anyone else see? Dimensions are seven one and seven four from the existing structure from Glen Place. And just to clarify, you're proposing what from Glen Place? Six six?
Six six to the steps. And to the actual front porch would be eleven point five.
Eleven point five is from where that is. And you're proposing a single-story covered porch with railings and roof structure. And your existing house is. Gonna go up, but only on the right side if you're looking at it from Glen Place. And that's at eighteen something.
Uh, that would be, that would, that would be a six two and four set.
Right.
Can I ask a question about that? Six point six setback with the stairs there? Had you considered at all? Keeping the eleven-foot and change setback, putting the stairs in front of the house? At the top of that? Where it would actually connect with the walkway from the garage? And would it give you? An additional four feet of setback on that side to the new place?
We did not look at that. Uh.
See what you're saying there?
Well, I, I, I think a couple of issues I would take with that is, first, I think it would look less inviting. At the front door behind a higher wall and railings, and the stairs going up on the side. Plus, I think most of the time, the way they use a house right now, this, this one, or the structure, then proposed to be moved. You got to probably come back a lot. So this staircase wouldn't really work with the flow of the site. So, spoke from aesthetics and practicality, I think, I think the way we have it, even though it may.
What you just said is that you're not gonna use that staircase match, but you're taking an additional four feet of variance for it.
Not from the garage. Uh, so they don't really walk that way. If, if they're parking on the street or someone's coming to their house. This is the most likely way they're gonna go. And I, I think to me, I don't, I don't, e- even though it does infringe further in the setback. I, I, I don't think the alternative is preferable.
Well, I think it would look, I agree, uh, you're, size, I don't, aesthetically, I don't think it would look great.
It wouldn't center the house, no. A- and the staircase kind of centers the house, uh, you know, yeah. Like I said, we're just looking for.
Yeah.
compliant or more compliant alternative. On other applications, we're letting that actually be considered.
Um, so as far as proposed work on the first, uh, what we're looking to do, the existing rear portion, one-story structure. We believe it must be confirmed with the foundation itself, seems to be in good shape, but the, the structure above is not well-built. It's not insulated, it's two-by-four walls. We wanna go down, we've talked to their contractor, it seems to be a much better approach. Plus, we have to reinforce this, reinforce ceilings anyway for the second floor addition and hangers and all that. So right now, it's an existing family room and a, a full bath. We're proposing going to a combined kitchen and eating kitchen. Based on the back door, interior renovation, relocate the powder room, make a more traditional foyer that kind of complements the style of. The historic style of the house, and I'm in the portion for the forest, combining existing living and dining to make a more. Kind of contemporary sized living room. Demo an existing, uh, wood fireplace, replace it with an interior gas fireplace. Where that, um, where that fireplace was, we wanna add French doors that would also access. The wraparound porch, which again, is both aesthetic, but they really do want to deal with use of porch, right now, it's just a covered entry. Um, so that, that's pretty much what's going on on the first floor. Second floor right now is pretty small. It's measured to the outside of the, outside wall, it's only six hundred and seven square feet. And that has given us three beds and one bath. Um, so obviously that's tight. The idea is they would like to get a more modern master suite, which the only way we could really do that re. The only way we could do that interior without adding would probably go from, we combine two beds to one bed. And then you're left with a two-bed, two-bath, which obviously doesn't make sense, um, for most people. So we're proposing go from a three-bed, one-bath to a four-bed, two-bath. That is gonna be the addition, that is the portion that mostly cathedral for the bedroom. And pull back, small open closet, and reconfigure some other interior spaces. So three kid-sized bedrooms left over. Um, that would explain what we're doing on the second floor, as mentioned before. Uh, whether it be for storage or possibly a small office, stack a staircase, a permanent stair. Up above the existing, uh, staircase to the existing attic, not the new structure. Um, as mentioned, existing basement plan was included, uh, the portion we're adding above is an existing crawl space. Uh, from the exterior, uh, elevation of Glenn. We're trying to complement and tie in and expand upon the Dub's Colonial. Uh, so we're turning a gambrel for the addition for Glenn. Uh, proposing a wraparound porch with a covered entry accent centered on the, the door that's where the. Stairs are going toward Glenn and wrap that around Forest, which I think functionally is what the owners are looking for. But I also personally would like when a farmhouse appears to have two fronts. And it kind of leads the eye around the corner. So even though it does infringe upon setback, I think it'll still get improvement for the neighborhood.
Right, what's the space below the gambrel on the first floor?
That, that is an overhang?
No, on, on your, uh, the elevation above that. Yeah, 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 what is that?
Um, like this portion?
Yeah, the, the lower, the first floor, what's in there?
That's currently the family.
Oh, yes.
We'll convert into the, into the kitchen.
On this one, or is there's a possibility to put one in there?
We don't have penetration issue there?
Yeah.
Since it's a lot, acts a lot of well without a one.
The, the major, I think a four percent, which is really small.
Four percent, no. Usually, it looks like a lot of all without any. Is there, is there a, a, a way?
Um, the only reason.
I don't know what the inside looks like there, it's like.
Yeah, the only reason we gave was, so is that is where the kitchen, the back kitchen would go. And we're trying to provide more windows on, on sink overlook in the yard to build.
Stove and fridge and.
So we went through this literally exactly last month, right? The issue is you've got a really tight setback over there. Um, I, I just wanna, I just wanna say for everybody, this is the reason why we don't take the thirty-six. Thirty-five or thirty-four numbers and just throw them out and say there's eight more that are this size. This application is terrible on me. Terrible, because you blow everything out, you're not even close, you have to see it in order for it to make sense. Um. Okay, back to that. So you've got a really tight setback over there, and the first floor exists as it is today, so you're not exacerbating that, but you're going up.
Yes. The second floor, we do have two windows in addition, but, so this is, that, uh, it has an form, the back.
I'm saying that's the tight setback, and I make it look as airy as possible.
If I could add, uh, that is where our neighbor Sally Jones stores all the trash cans.
Oh.
So, we would have a hook sole and everything else, and I'd be looking at trash cans.
Okay.
It does, I get it, maybe we do something up high, maybe a transom light.
Exactly, it doesn't have to be a window, it would be something.
Yeah, something.
With roof lines, we've done it with list, your last project, we did every plan on. Something to break it up a little bit, because it just looks like a lot of wall. To me, I'm a short setback.
Like, I think I would, if, if, you know, Rob and Collet are okay, upper windows. We, I just know from the way the kitchen's working out, because it's an open plan, there's not that much upper cabinets. Um, we could probably squeeze some more on the back side, that's the only reason I'm not hesitant to say, yeah, let's go.
I don't think it has to be a window. You actually have, perhaps, you have Sullivan in there. And I understand it, you, you lead a firm where you don't have windows, and this is the best place for that to be. Could you extend that roof? Yeah, just extend that roof across.
Okay, well, yeah.
I mean, that, I think that works really well when you don't have space for the window.
Yeah. Is there, is there an architectural reason that that doesn't work or just sounds well, or that it shouldn't?
A couple things, so we did talk about this a little bit, and when, when I originally saw the elevation with this gambrel detail in the back. They questioned the additional expense, and I mentioned, part of the benefit was for this purpose. So on the second floor, we were trying, we were truly trying to achieve that. The roof here is a wide overhang, I think we could extend it, I, if it would help, um. I gotta see how far, I think it'd be fine, at some point you run into fire and handling issues, but there's ways around that.
I'm worried it's a stick out. It's on about a sixty-three angle, I wanna say.
This over here.
Yeah.
You know what, me?
What's the projection?
It's about two feet.
Okay.
So that, you know what, two feet to five, no, it'd be, it'd be okay, it'd be okay. So we could tie that around and wrap it into. With the rapid of the gear.
I think, so you're the only person working on this application that's actually in architect. Are we wrong in thinking this is gonna look better and will help break out that facade? Being mindful of how close it is to the neighboring law?
I, I think the second floor does allow the heavy lifting in that regard. I, I'm not so sure.
We're doing the system to save.
I don't know if it's really making a difference. Myself, if it was easy to pop a window in there, that might help minor to some degree. But it's, you know, as Rob discussed, the way the neighbors pro- it, it's really utility zone back there, both for them and apparently.
Yeah, our conventional units are right on the backside of, 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 under that.
Under that. Can we have a picture down that property?
Um, I think submitted one from, um, Forest, I don't, I don't think we saw that data in that regard.
Okay, and let me ask you about the second front.
I, I will.
Someone, yeah.
This is it over here, date is seven.
I, I do think extending the roof might help a little bit. I don't know that it's needed, but.
I don't think we can see it on the.
That would be, unfortunately, that would be the best image. Yeah. That one.
There.
Yeah, right. Yeah, they will when they're back there, they certainly will. Look, look, that house isn't gonna be there forever. This one may not be there almost forever, right? But, but when your house extends beyond that other, you get that. Well, and, you know, you gotta work with what you got.
Yeah.
I, I actually think it's worth it.
That, what's your, you know? Again, I, I think it, I think it could help, I don't think it's fully needed, but the owner's.
So is there also a shot directly to Forest inside the house?
That one's the one, um, even, I think that was.
There's no door there. There's no door there now?
House to Forest?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, just the sunroom bump out. Uh, which you can see on the, uh, upper right-hand corner. And the chimney going up.
Yeah.
And right where that chimney stack is, we're proposing the, uh, the, uh, next of which, right, and there's no one.
That's probably the idea to wrap around there functionally and end it for this purpose.
You're spot on about two fronts, because you got two fronts.
Yeah.
And, you know, the thing is, you made it a lot better than what it is now.
Yeah.
I, I could see a little stair though, and, and actually making it a little bit more inviting to Forest. Just right between those two columns. Make it easier for me when it comes in on. You wouldn't need another, look, look, you would need another variant. When you're on a corner, right, you gotta respect both sides. I think it's not disrespectful, it's very dense. I don't know what other board members think. Um.
How do you feel about moving the staircase?
I think definitely want to keep the one on the brand, just talk to them, the way the site works and the way the true front door would be.
You're moving the front door, by the way?
Yeah, we're shifting.
Okay.
What's the setback on the, on the, on the forest zone, thirty feet conforming, any stairs would approach.
That way the zone.
Yeah. What kind are you, you do wood frame or do you masonry stairs?
We have this wood frame, um, I don't have a leg to get tied either one or the other, crosswise, I don't think we prefer, yeah, so anyway, but, yeah.
I dislike our current brick staircase, uh, honestly, the current brick staircase we have now.
Right.
We just like other metrics, so.
Sure.
We certainly.
Drawn, I said this wood frame.
Yeah. Yeah, and just checking the, the, on the entry in the staircase, and it's just so that the house gets centered. Right now, if you go to the, uh, photo, uh. Uh, you can see with the, yeah, with the addition, just the family room, that, that, that grade to the right. It, it's just off kilter, it ends up off-center, so if we draw a two-story above. The current family room, it, it almost screams move on the stair.
It's also to get more aware and really open up your living room too.
Yep.
Whereas that would land right in the middle of it right now.
You have a sidewalk on your side, on Glen?
Uh.
Sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting, so that picture up her left, right, we're talking about some really, really small numbers. The applicant hasn't put it in front of us, but the truth is, there's some additional space between the property boundary and the curb. And, and as you look at it from there, certainly doesn't look like eighteen feet. Um.
No. Doesn't. Let me property to the base of curb is. Like it's a little bit over, it's a batting feet, maybe a little more from the property line to the curb.
Yeah. Yeah. For the wraparound porch is going, you're showing that electric meter and the gas meter.
That, that is correct, they are there.
So, so that's the architectural description. I mean, I, I, I think a lot of these hardship, so to speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna go into legal. Okay.
Um, so, house obviously built a long time ago, nineteen thirty, pushing in a hundred years. Corner lot far, uh, below the width, um, was it, uh, nine nineties? Ninety-five's required, fifty's there, so obviously that's created setback issues. That had a lot to do with the porch and setback to the neighbor. Um. Uh, the basement, we've talked about, contributing, uh, seventy-two, that's about ten percent on the floor area. Though, to a point, even without the basement count, it is still slightly overfloor. Though, to a point, even without the basement count, it is still slightly over floor area. If you were to look at it in our seven five zone, um, that does kick up to a thirty five percent of floor area and that would be compliant. Um, for what that's worth. Uh, I also think when you look at, even though the technically the basement counts, technically it's a three story structure. The max height permit is thirty two and. Thirty two and we're about twenty seven. And that's because it's low quarter fours. There, there's not even an eight foot four on any of the levels. The basement does stick out a grade, but it's second door existed by seven six. The attic's low because it's a duck wall, you know, it's no story to have. So the volume of this thing is way smaller than twelve.
You're holding the existing ridge, right?
Yep, we're matching that time to it. So I think I, obviously with a lot like this, nothing's ever been before. If it was a new house, it would appear bigger. And whoever would, would be doing the new house would be in front of board with a lot of these same issues over the head. I don't know how you get around. Uh, I think in this case, it's a really nice looking house. I really do think this not just gonna be. Working with the existing architecture, I think it's gonna make it a lot nicer even. And I think given its prominence on the transition between Glen and Forest, between the addition and the front porch. To me, it seems to outweigh the negatives.
You can't put a conforming structures.
Well, no.
Well, it's eleven and a half. You're, you're under by four thousand square feet on the lot. And I don't think you can get the setback.
We don't need the setback. Well, talk about, talk about the seven five though. You said that that would move you up to thirty five percent from the twenty eight. Uh, what would the other requirements be?
Still under a lot of them.
So if you went to an R seven five, and again, I don't know if you wanna look at corner versus mid. This is a little more of a mid lot block, the way the width is set up. Um, if you went to an R seven five, mid lot block could have a sixty foot lot width, a corner lot would be eighty. Uh, a mid lot block would be seventy five hundred square feet, a corner would be ten thousand. So depending which, it makes sense to look at. If you're gonna look at, at that zone. The setbacks for accessory are unaffected, so the garage would be the same. You go up, you go, you decrease your setbacks a little bit, single side yard goes from ten down to seven, so we still wouldn't be conforming. Nine five point two, but it'd be closer. And then sixteen total, that doesn't apply. Um, I think the thing where it would help was max lot.
That would apply to your, setback to your adjacent neighbor.
J, oh, it does, okay. Okay.
Or existing condition if you're not moving the force.
I think the key thing it helps us with is the floor area ratio. The floor area cap would go down from thirty to twenty to three thousand and twenty. Technically, you're still a little over that with three thousand four to be. Uh, but we would still be on, we'd be under the ratio of thirty five percent. Um.
That's only because of the basement though, right? I mean, the real number we're looking at is twenty two sixty six.
We're still a floor area ratio than an R seven five. You're right, with the, with the base. If you put that off, then we'd be under thirty five percent.
It would still require batteries, but for, for back to the purposes.
Yeah.
We have to skip that completely, by the way, everybody, just so you know.
Like the basement?
The basement is completely script. It's, I, I just wanna make sure everybody recognizes, don't forget.
I mean, it's gonna have to be memorialized in any.
Good.
Um, anything else? Driveway, uh, I agree. It definitely makes that worse from the building ordinance, but the reality is they have two kids. One is not live, is off to, is college.
Oh, that's it.
Out and one is getting older. So even though they're adding a bedroom for them, it's not necessarily gonna resolve additional bars. The way they've looked at it, um. Do you think anything else here? And, and again, I think, I, I think you even mentioned it. Uh, it, it really would be modernizing the floor plan much more nice than what it is today. And I do think then there would be a resale value. I don't see actual proposed books on getting them up now. So I do think it would keep it a sort of structure and save it. I don't know if any not down anyway, but I think it increases that likelihood. So, yeah, I think, I think that's.
Such as, um. Standard question everybody gets, given that you're increasing your building coverage and your first coverage, is there any consideration for a drywall or something?
We, we did not. Um, unlike the previous one, I, I do think if that was something or. For request, I do think it would work, but is, did you have a basement right now and it is dry? So I don't have, see a problem with sale.
Yeah, we'll complain to them.
Yeah.
So a big old three hundred year old oak tree on the corner there. Uh, absorbs all the water that comes off of that house. So, you know, we're, we're not looking. All, all of my scuppers dump out onto the grass right now.
So you don't have a water problem and you're not interested in selling the drawl on that?
No, no, we, I, I can certainly dry well if we need to.
So I know that there's, there's serious problems. I mean, you may not be experiencing it on your lot. You're shaking your head.
We're, we're, we have neighbors and.
So the new house that's being constructed within two or three of you is flooding terribly. And you have a problem on Lake Avenue when somebody's just installed a pool, which is creating a lot of problems.
Yep, and.
But the number one flooding issue beyond colonial is right at your house.
Yeah, we, we're not seeing any water in the house at all. Now, again, that tree sucks up a lot of water. I mean, it's, the, the trunk of that tree is seventeen foot circumference. And if you age it, it's, you know, I, 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 I'm looking for the brass plaque that George Washington had. And get, you know, a sork, uh, plaque on.
So what are, when you construct in all seriousness, so. So I've lost several trees while doing renovations. It happens because those root systems are very sensitive. Yours are close to the house and close to the road. It's just, would you do anything special to protect that tree?
Oh, absolutely. Well, we, we've spent, I don't know, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars over the last ten years trying to get dead wood out of that tree. Uh, because during bad, bad storms, we, we do get large limbs of size of die coming down. And, uh, we, we try and keep that as maintained as possible. Uh, the root system has popped up some of the sidewalk on Forest that needs to be addressed. Uh, when they put the new storm drain in on the corner of Forest and Glen, there was real concerns because they actually cut out a lot of the roots. Um, to put those new storm drains in there. Uh, for, that tree's not going anywhere. Uh, we've added. I don't know, in the backyard along the fence line, we've added, I don't know, forty something skip laurels. Uh, we have the two big pine trees in the backyard.
And from the tree on the corner. Yep.
When did they put the tree in? How long ago was that?
Twelve years ago.
Oh, so it's been a while.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The tree on the corner, I think will be okay after construction, but I think it makes a better argument to do a wood frame deck. For point, you know, as opposed to with an outdoor or full.
Well, here, here's what makes a lot of sense. Don't use forest for staging. Don't put a dumpster there. Don't do anything on that side that you don't have to. Everything on the line play side. That's gonna give you your best shot.
And, and we can put everything, you know, the dumpster obviously, but in the driveway, uh, all the, all the, uh, material can go right in the backyard. Um, there, there's no issue there. The picket fence around the house can be replaced.
So just to clarify, you are okay with the idea of doing the drawl?
Sure.
So I just wanna point out that anything that you're able to do to get your water underground is gonna help your neighbor. Um, and to the extent that we can incorporate that into what you're doing when you have all the equipment there, that's.
And with a drywall, I would ask that you design a, a source. Yeah, and a, a deeper detail. You know, which roof leaders are going to it and which one. And is there a consideration to dry well to respect the tree? Cause we're gonna be digging a hole.
You can put it in the backyard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put it on the other side, right?
There's only a three scuffers coming over the house as it is right now. Uh, one in the backyard, uh, one on the corner of Sally's yard, so that would be. On Forest, the, the, the point, yep, no, no, uh, I was, yeah, it's on outside. These are lit, earnest gardens are now. You know, one that pops out here, which feeds out into this point of the bed. There's one in this corner here and then that's the patio right there. There's one that goes.
So what you should do is when they come in to put in your new gutters, they're gonna be able to level it wherever they can go. And we would ask that you run everything to the backyard to the extent that it's feasible and capture all in the backyard in a drywall.
Okay.
And then what you're not putting into forest is gonna help with what's happening, the several doors down where they're, where they're flooded.
Yeah, I've seen them pumping water there of, uh. Yeah.
And there's no solution.
Uh, next to, uh, Ash's one. Yeah, and I, I believe, uh, it's a mills is the last thing. Yeah, that, that, that pool that went in is pushing water into the next door neighbor's house.
I think there's actually a number of issues which were definitely interratable, but e- apparently historically. That low floor was there and has been a problem over a decade, which hasn't been as bad. Because you've got the new subdivision on Lake and you've got some other infervious that's come in over the last fifteen years and, and the combination of all of that is. Bringing it back to the service.
Literally, you think there's underground streams there going?
Uh, no, actually, that, that would be on, on the other side over past Beadman. But there, there's, no, it all drains to this one.
So.
Surface floor, yeah. And, and the pool thing is separate, but it's not helping.
Got it.
Okay, um, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, anything further?
No.
Um, any, uh, comments or questions from the public this time? Let the record be blacked out. Okay. Um, it's your side. Before we deliberate, I wanna ask a few questions of you. You talked about the stairway facing Glen Place. And so I think we know that you don't wanna adjust that. We talked about a staircase. Um, facing Forest. I think that we're gonna talk about that deliberation. We also talked about extending your roof line. And I'm interested in understanding whether or not those things are feasible. Um, and, and whether or not the applicant is, is, is okay with that. It means whether or not you think. I think on the roof line, you're like, eh, I'm not sure it's necessary. What about the stairs to create a more of a second front?
I, I would say correct on the roof line. I think it could help a little bit. I don't think it's totally necessary. I think most of it, we're adding some interest in those. On a second story, so I'm kinda neutral on that. You know, if that's something the board wants to see, I, I don't think we're against that.
Yeah, the roof line gives you the opportunity to continue to gutter to the back of the house and carry that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's also exactly where you're exacerbating the pre-existing non-conformity on this side of the line.
Yeah.
Um. Can I add one thing about the staircase, um, especially if there's a walkway associated with it? By my quick math, it looks like you've got a hundred and seventy two square feet left until you, uh, go over the threshold for first coverage.
I think we'd be okay with that, cause thirty feet, thirty figure is roughly five.
Just wanted to make sure it's a consideration.
Yeah, it's fine. Um, I, I would lean more towards functioning of that as far as from your guys' perspective, if you wanna see a staircase here. I have no mind to talk about it at some point, but you just, I don't know why we didn't go that route.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. As long as it's centered and.
I would agree, would it send even more of the two side nature of the house?
Yeah. And so what we're talking about would be centered in the two columns on the left hand side. You brought something similar to what you're doing on the other side, so they look the same.
Yeah.
And you would just break your rail in there. Here's what you would lose. You'd lose the ability to use that pocketed area. As a seating area or something specific. Did you, did you buy furniture yet?
No.
Does it strike you, does it strike you as inconsistent with the way you were gonna use that apron?
Well, yeah, you'll, you'll be able to sit in the corner, you know, you might not be able to sit directly where the stairs come off, but there'll still be a little seat.
I think one other, I'm not saying pushing more in here. The only other thing is without a railing there at night, that's your living room. You'll feel like you're a little more exposed to the sidewalk, but that's pretty mine. I, I, I think what I was saying is okay with. Both that and the roof and the staircase.
Okay.
Okay, that's considered a long, right?
Uh, yeah, I probably think so.
Probably a stone.
For some reason creates a lot of coverage and I think we can, we can make it work within that.
It, it would be kinda sort of a stone, you know, maybe like slate or something, you know, some crushed stone would be.
Yeah.
You can just lay it right.
Yeah.
And that's obviously a running noise impact.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, good.
And, and i- if that becomes the issue, uh, I guess.
Would be a similar size to the, so what's that projection?
Yeah, it should be the same height, right?
Yeah, it would be roughly, it should be roughly five.
Yes, it's five feet, so it'd be twenty five, but similar.
Yeah.
But if, if you look. At the left side elevation. It looks like that end is. Higher up out of the ground, is that correct, that there?
Roughly, yeah.
So you're gonna be hot, you're gonna be at another.
This, that, or the rear yard, um, this corner.
There's grades on the plan.
Um, yeah, fifty two grade. This property is a little bit higher than over here. But I think the five feet would, would work there. It may be less.
You thinking of the chimney out?
Yes.
All right, I wanna bring it back to the board to deliberate, so I wanna make sure that we're done. You're done?
Yeah.
We done with proposed bells and whistles? Okay. Scott?
I think it's a good plan. I, I, I don't like exacerbating vertically on the five foot side, but. This is a much better use of the space than we're looking at now. And you're already shy, shy eye. We know what Sullivan House looks like, so we know that there's only a tight setback on that side. And I'm willing to give that up as I think it's a really nice. I like the, the, the two fronts look great. I think the staircase could look good. I know you're gonna lose the functionality of the porch, but. I'm supportive.
What about the, uh, the extension roof line?
Yeah, you know, I, 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 looking at it, I was kinda like, yeah, I guess it could work, you know, but, but the. Mr. Shavetti brought up a good point. It will give you an opportunity to run that gutter there. I think that's good.
You're gonna see it, right? The whole, the other house stops as it sits. That entire, that entire side is gonna be exposed to the backyard.
I mean, ideally, I'd like to put a little transom window there, but in, given that, it, it's either one or the other. I don't think you can both. But I think running the, um. I, I think running the roof line will give you more functionality. And we've seen that technique work before in some situations.
Agreed with the dry well, we're gonna have to do it. We're gonna have to run that roof line.
It, it'll, it'll help with that, yeah, for sure.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I agree about the roof line. I think that, um, that makes sense, especially with the gutter. Uh, I don't know that, I don't know, I don't really have a strong opinion on the stairs on the, um. On the Forest Avenue side and I would. I don't know that that makes that big of a difference in terms of welcoming for, for that elevation, um. I wouldn't be pushing for that, especially because you're, you're creating another setback issue over there. That's my only, that's my only thought on that stuff. But otherwise, I think it's a great plan.
Well, um, I would agree with Mrs. D'Angelo. Um, I think extending the roof line is important for drainage issues. The stairs. You know, one way or the other for me. Um, I do think, you know, the plan as it stands is probably the. Best solution for renovation for this piece of property. Um, you know, again, another funky fair hated lot. Uh, I think it's a plan.
Martin? Yeah, I have a lot to add. Uh, compliments to the, the applicant and, and their professional. Shyest for great application, uh, so. You do. I said to the neighborhood, we got a dry well in, that's, that's even better. Kind of bring a cherry back to Forest Avenue staircase and kind of either way. Um, I do think having that extension on the side would definitely be a static appeal. Um, yeah, I think it's great application. I mean, it's a difficult lot, undersized, corner lot. I think I saw something in here that the, the building envelope was like ten feet wide. It's very difficult to do much of anything here on comply. So I think they came in with a great application and.
With that twenty four foot separation issue, it actually makes the building end about six feet wide.
Not much for that.
Uh, I would agree with my colleagues. Nothing much really to add. I think it's a good design. Uh, I think it's gonna be a nice property on that corner lot. Appreciate your work and what you put in. Difficult site to build on, but I think they've. Taken everything into consideration. I think everything that you've made comments about rain and runoff. Overall positive, I would agree with Sheri. I'm not quite sure if that. Step off to the, the other street is a big show breaker. All right, leave that up to the homeowners to make a decision. I don't think it's anything that we have to. Make a proposal for, uh, yeah, good job.
Can, can we do that?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose exactly that.
Okay. Cause I'm not sure about it. I'm like, yeah, but I get the two fronts, but, you know.
Could we add something? My one concern though. Staircase aside, that tree, three hundred volt tree, I had a very large tree on my property that I had to take down. I wish I could have kept it because it was a spunk. It was fantastic. And, and so not only that, the historic age of that tree, an oak, we had say, uh, prized. Tree for the town.
Yeah.
So is there something we can incorporate? Is that our? Is that our jurisdiction? Is that our jurisdiction?
I think it would be okay for us to identify in the resolution. Um, that the applicant is represented, that they'll be sensitive to the root system of that tree when they're building. Um, and that they will use commercially reasonable efforts to provide protection um in terms of staging. Location of equipment, uh, and dumpsters, uh, time of construction. Uh, to do reasonable things to protect the the tree, I know that the applicants will, um, but I think you can add it in. Um, and I think that will be proven. The tree is on the corner of Glen Place and Forest. So I I want to amplify what I said before, this is the reason why we have to go through these things, and the numbers are preposterous on paper. But the reality is a beautiful renovation, I used to live over here in Vittu, this really old house in the neighborhood. Um, this is just the best uh of what we do to take an old house um and bring it into modern times. Um, I feel strongly about the second front to to Forest. Um, because they're all facing that way, and I think it's going to look really good, but um, I really do hesitate to design it. And so what I'm going to suggest is that we give you the option, and I'm going to suggest that we give you the variance. On the come effectively, so you can evaluate whether or not you think it's going to work well and whether or not you want it. It is beautiful the way you've done it, and you've made it much more front to Forest, so you've done a lot of the work already. Um, I feel like if you did a matching staircase, then it would really add to that corner um porch effect. Uh, and I think it'd be really neat, but I but I think you're, I think you're more than capable to make that call.
Look nice, it. Doesn't add any utility, because nobody's going to be coming to the house from that side. You reduce the utility of the porch in that area, plus you're building out a few more feet towards the roots of that tree. Which probably extend up to the house anyway, because the canopy extends over the house. And plus you'd be putting in a walk of some kind, even if it was just a couple of stepping stones, you know, you're you're. Just adding a stressor to that.
Let me ask you a question, if I were to propose to approve the application and give the applicant the option. Versus leaving it out altogether, would it make a difference in your vote? No, anybody else? Okay, uh, I'm gonna propose to approve the Thompson application. Uh, based on the uh plans and events submitted tonight, based on the accuracy of the record, um, and the information presented to the board this evening. Um, the first condition is the installation of a dry well. Uh, which is subject to the review and approval of the board engineer. Uh, with the idea being that the design of the new gutter system. Um, to maximize water um to the west side of the lot. Where the dry well would go, to maximize what would be put underground. Um, the second condition will be the extension of the roof line along the southerly elevation. Um, to connect with the other side, uh, to break up that uh too short of ass inside of that setback area. And then the third thing is going to be a proposal that the applicant um give due consideration to installing a second staircase. Um, between the, just just so you're looking at it, between these two columns, um. In which case, the the variance would include the variance um for the front yard setback. Um, that would be approached by that stairway, uh, the only, the only approach that would be the stairway itself.
Do you want to specify, uh, do you not exceed?
Um, yeah, so. Well, it's it's only for stairs, so the only opportunity to 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 take the variance would be for the creation of the stairs. The condition would be that it's no further than what it takes to get back to the ground. And the 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 steps would be sized the same as on the other side, constructed with the same materials. Um, and in terms of the maximum, just tell me what that maximum would be, and we'll we'll do it not to exceed them.
For the setback?
Yeah, based on, based on the existing uh proposal to plan.
So it'd be five more feet, so it'd be twenty-five, but give yourself maybe an extra foot, so I'd say twenty-four feet.
Does anybody have, I don't, I don't think I've ever done that before, so did anybody have a, I want to make sure nobody has a problem.
And we also specify we're not going to exceed the purpose coverage threshold.
Yeah, um, right, we're not granting the variance for that, so we'll amplify that. Um, because the understanding is that you can do some sort of a walk there, and with the with the stairs, that you can work with what you got. And you'll be able to make it work. I actually don't know that you would even need a walk, you would still get the appearance of that second front is completed. Um, people could walk right through the basket, so you're not using it at all. Yeah, the stepping stones are easy too, blue stone, blue stone two-by-threes.
Include the tree.
What's that?
The tree.
Uh, yeah, so, and also that we would include in the resolution, um. Simply an application of the discussion with regard to the protection of the tree, the applicant's representation to the board. That they'll take um all reasonable steps to provide protection, um, and it's within the the drip line, so. This is what I did on my property, I didn't know, and I used the area under the tree to store stuff. And what that did was that killed the root systems, and so we lost two really, really big trees, because it wasn't smart enough.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to pay some attention to the sidewalk there, they, they, back when they did the storm drain on the corner. They replaced sidewalks on Forest, and some of those sidewalks have popped, they never replaced the the concrete uh walkway along. Uh, Glen Place, we still have the old aggregate uh with seashells and and stone in there, uh, so. That'll all be changed out too with the uh, you know, uh, re- removed and and reported. Uh, with new concrete along there, because that's all in rough shape too.
Yeah, it's on the typically, it's literally at the point, maybe it'll be off the problems.
Large trucks have to go wide as they're coming down, wanting to go up Forest, because it's branch, it's only about ten feet up off the deck.
So I made a motion, I need a second. Yes, best to be variants are. Does anyone need a comfort break? On the record, I know we need a comfort break, moving on to the clock application. Bring up all your witnesses, counsel.
Got one with me this evening, Mr. Ed O'Neill. He's sworn in, he's going to be best of bond, both as a architect and planner. The homeowners are here as well, though I don't intend to introduce their testimony, though, if you have questions if needed.
Well, after a few questions, I'd like to bring him on, then, why don't we bring everybody up? Here's testified, please stand, raise your right hand. Before you start testifying, you can state your name, spell your last name, purposes of. Oh, no, not yet, when you start testifying. Mr. Rang, before we get started, it's uh nine thirty. So I wanted to use the time that we have, but I also want to be mindful of the fact that we're not going to go past about about ten thirty.
Uh, that's fair enough, Mr. Rader, uh, I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak to you.
You have more exhibits first? I have A one, this is going to be the zoning board adjustment application guidelines. Uh, also inclusive of the uh various checklist. It's dated December nineteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, A two is going to be the copy of the development permit letter, November twenty-nine twenty twenty-three, three is going to be narrative. Uh, it's a development together with zone board regulations and approval. Um, with exhibits marked, that is A three, A four is going to be sixteen, well, it's going to be, A four is going to be the. A survey by Charles Schumont, dated October fifth, twenty twenty-three, A five, according to the architectural plans. Uh, last revised December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, A six is going to be photographs of the existing homes, surroundings, I believe that there are three images. A seven is going to be saving the variances, we also have, um. ZB one is going to be the CAV report, first one, February twenty twenty-four, overseas from Jason Brizar. ZB two is going to be the CAV report, number two, March fourth, twenty twenty-four. And I guess ZB three, uh, we mark the borough resolution that we will refer to by the. Well, I think the prior resolution, uh, with regards to this problem. You have additional exhibits, we're not tomorrow?
Uh, Mr. Kovet, just to be clear, the architectural plan, what was the last revision date you had?
I have the last revised December five twenty twenty-three.
All right, so I I have a more recent set that was submitted, uh, if we want to mark them perhaps as.
We'll strike that, we'll give you the revised date.
All right, so the last revision date I had was February the thirteenth of twenty twenty-four.
That'll be A five.
Thank you. Just for the record, I have the same plans and effort details.
So, okay, we'll go with that. And then we have. We have a series of photograph of the the basement of the existing house. I have, we've marked existing photos, that's all these same photographs that we've gone on.
These are different.
This is A six, these are different? Okay, we're going to mark that. A eight, can you describe them? Uh, how many? There are four photographs of the existing basement and existing cross, uh, existing cellar and existing prospect. Existing basement and cellar? Uh, just would be cellar, that's my mistake, go.
Means a lot around here.
I know, that's why I call myself.
No basements, just cellar, existing.
Then there is also, um. A digital rendering of the proposed house. E nine tissue render. And a date on that? Is there a date on that? Today. Six-six point four. And then I also have a smaller. Copies, well, by seventy copies, uh, there are three, uh, studies of. Front setbacks. House sizes and lot sizes within the general area of the subject property. So fair to characterize the setbacks of surrounding properties? Yes.
Is that a bit of a relentless survey that was provided?
Yeah, it is.
Do you have a date on that, Mr. O'Neil?
Again, that's six-six.
And you're gonna circulate most of the wood?
That's A ten. That all of it? That's it.
Yeah, that's true. Mr. O'Neil, is there an aerial photo also?
Sorry, sorry, you said that was it. Uh, A eleven?
Thank you.
Aerial, approximate date of the year of, uh. Twenty twenty-three, it will live in. Thank you.
That that's going to be it for having that.
All right, so Mr. Rang, before we start.
I'm sorry, I didn't run the checklist. Yeah, there's, there's one submission where it's being requested, it's a real SCD petition. However, on this this project, it appears that the five thousand square foot threshold may be crossed. Rumble dry calculations been done yet, but I would recommend a temporary waiver, and that, uh, in the future, if they need it, from a bit of a one.
Real source?
That's definitely reasonable.
Anything beyond that? Anyone a problem with that? Okay, Mr. Rang, so we have started at the beginning, right, this is the same lot that this board saw. And considered variances on our previous occasion in our recent lifetime, right?
That's correct, uh, a little bit, uh, more than a year ago.
So, um, what was that approval for?
Uh, I was not the applicant's attorney at that time, I was a prior owner. Um, to the best of my knowledge, it was, uh, allowing. The construction of a second story addition over the existing. Uh, single story or a single story, one and a half story home. Um, it was going to require the removal of a detached garage, removal of a shed. And it was going to allow a very odd secondary, second principal dwelling. To remain on the lot, um, in the back corner of the lot with, um. Deficient side and rear setbacks. Um, and I, I believe the board treated that as pre-existing non-conformity. And the factual findings seem to indicate that that structure dated to about nineteen twenty-two, if I'm correct. Um, and it was somehow, um. Used as a second residence by tenants or other occupants continuously for. Hundred years or so, uh, hard to believe, it's a very small structure, but. Uh, that that was the finding, um. Other than reading the resolution, I haven't listened to the tapes, and I didn't attend those.
So, uh, once that. One of the struggles with that application was just myriad inconsistencies in zoning. And I believe that there were some. Improvements or removals that were done in conjunction with that, is that correct?
I don't know that the removals actually took place. So if you were to go to the site today, as I did, um, the garage is still there, so the site today, the shed is still there. Um, it does not look to me that much has changed as far as what the board was discussing, so.
So is it fair to assume from the board's perspective that all of that. Is water under the bridge, and we're starting over again based on what you have today, or are you building off of what was done before this board?
I think a a few of the things that the board previously, um, conditioned the relief on, previously asked for. Are definitely still included, which would be the removal of the detached garage, so that was. Something that you wanted, that is something that we are still proposing, the removal of the shed, again, you wanted it, we're still proposing it. Um, what we're saying about the um second principal dwelling. Is that if the board were so inclined to grant the other relief associated with the application. We would leave it intact in terms of the structure itself. Uh, but we would lessen sort of the intensity of the use of the lot, the density of the lot. Bring it into more conformity with the ordinance, because what we would do is we would agree to take that out of the rental market. It would not be something that you could rent to another family or another person for use as a separate dwelling or a separate structure. Um, what they say is that the the it would become accessory essentially to the main home. Um, it would still require variance relief, uh, but instead of a variance, a devariance for a second principal dwelling. It would be a variance for an accessory structure that has a residential living space for the main home. So just like a detached additional living space, but maybe something that could be an office, for instance, for the homeowner.
Position required, not satisfying the conditions. Not satisfying the conditions, but still trying to build upon it.
Maybe we're. I, is there a particular condition that the board's aware that we're not?
My my question is, if you want the benefit of the variance that you granted before. Building what you're doing now, but you haven't taken any of the burdens. Can you still do that? Well, I think I'm understanding you to say that the current proposal includes some of the things that were discussed last.
Oh, yes.
But you're going to take it from the top.
There was also a lot of discussion about the history of that structure when it was built. Um, that took a lot of testimony, multiple hearings, so I think, where do you really be building on? When that was built, and the conclusion was that a pre-ordinance.
I don't know that we would talk too much about that structure, because I think what we would be proposing to do with that structure. Is much, much different and much, much more in conformity with your ordinance. Than allowing it to remain a second principal dwelling that somebody else could reside in, you know, as another tenant. Than allowing it to remain a second principal dwelling that somebody else could reside in, you know, as another tenant effectively or another family. We're saying we would not do that.
I think as long as it contains the structure to be able to do that, then. The uses, you know, as, as long as it contains a cooking facility and that, that it does qualify as a second residential structure.
I have a question here before we get any further. My understanding from dealing with similar situations in the past. Is this, this is a teardown of the main structure.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, m- my understanding is that when you tear that down. That thing in the backyard becomes the principal structure. And then you need a variance for a second. Residential structure on the property, you said that was devariance.
We have noticed for a devariance, um, what we noticed for primarily was to essentially utilize that, uh, second structure. As additional living space solely for these homeowners. Um, and in conjunction with Mr. Rizzo, he said, even if you're gonna do that. Because it's a detached structure where you have living space, you gotta notice for a D, that's a D, and we would put on some proofs for that. But I think it's, it's a step back or scaling it back dramatically from.
I understand that, what I'm saying is, what happened before was a renovation of the principal structure on the property. And the variance to leave that where it was. When you're proposing to remove that principal structure, then that thing in the backyard becomes the principal structure.
I, I don't know if it matters, because they're gonna ultimately propose two principal structures, I don't know if it matters which one's first or second. I think if the demolition of this existing dwelling is in conjunction with an approved application. It's different than getting a demo permit to strictly remove the building, let time, you know, pass. Then sure, I agree that that rear structure would.
That's the way we've branded it in the past.
Well, let's assume for a second now that that's, we, 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 we would, let's assume we all agree as to that. Would that create an impediment to creating a variance to facilitate the demolition and replacement of the house? Or you just wanna make sure that we cover it?
It's different than allowing that thing in the backyard to remain, which we did previously. It is when you demolish this front structure, that becomes the principal structure.
Okay, so, I, I think that you're adding sales. Hit on something, because what the proofs, what the substantial proofs were in the last presentation. All the substantial evidence that's presented, was that the, this two residential dwellings, if you will, pre-existing years old. And that as a result of that, they were allowed to continue that non-conformity. And therefore were allowed to make improvements to the front structure. Conditioned on all the other, some things that we did.
But now, since we are revisiting this and you're going to demolish the one structure. And continue to keep, which I remember looking at fire maps from God knows when in Florida.
Yeah.
From, you know.
Looked at insurance.
Before my grandparents' time. Do we want to, why, why do you want to keep this non-conforming unit? Where even though you're gonna say, oh, we're never gonna rent it out. You might leave in ten or fifteen years, and then the next person is going to want to rent it out. This is, this is, so in, in those fire maps, there were many. Adjacent structures on these properties, for whatever reasons they were there, they were there. Most of them are gone. I think if the town had its way, they'd all be gone. So I think, you know, as we look at this, you know, I would like to know why we're going to keep that existing structure and then build a new structure. Why not just incorporate that square footage into the new structure? Certainly, we can, uh, you know, for Miss Falk for testimony as far as what her intended use of it is. Um, I think it would be perfectly reasonable if we're sitting before you representing that it's not going to be rented to other people. That that would not just be a condition of approval if the board were so inclined to approve. But that would be something that would be backed up by a deed restriction, something that would be in the records of Monmouth County that would come up in a title search and be binding on future owners. Um, I've already told my client that that's probably something if the board were inclined to approve that they would want.
So, I just wanted to make it clear that it's not. Once you take that building in the front down, it's no longer approving. A pre-existing non-conforming second structure on the property. It's, it's approving a second structure on the property.
The second portion of my discussion was, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Rizzo that if they demo the front structure. Noticing for a devariance. It is, in a sense, a, a, a non-permitted use, that you grant that, then they could do that. It depends on whether or not the board is inclined to do that, having this on the presentation.
Not be getting illegal weeds here, but if they do prepare, prepare that existing structure down and this then becomes the primary structure. Is that then? You know, in compliance.
Not if, not if they do, if, if they do it, if they do it the way they're doing it here. As opposed to somebody just came in and demoed it and then said, oh yeah, I wanna build it, that's a matter of right? No, too bad for you, so sad, council would agree with you. But if you did it in conjunction with a request. They're not, they're not, believe me, they're not demoing anything until they get their approvals, they don't wanna do that, they wanna preserve as much as they can, all the rights available.
If they demo rebuild that, and then this, this property.
According to a board resolution.
But this property, this property, this building that we don't want like, as I said, if the town.
It would be a two-family structure.
But then it would be, and you would then, now it's, you know, non-conforming, would it be conforming then? If we allow it to exist.
It would not be conforming, but you would have granted them the right to create, in a sense, we take it's the new house, it's a new, non-conforming.
Okay, again.
So I, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that we understand that. That it's a different argument.
Hmm.
And that it's, and, and to understand from you what the different proofs are that are required.
I think, I think the path to get there is different, but the end result is still the same devariance, so we're talking.
Did you have something more?
I, it's a question clarification, the variance relief that we gave previously was basically just the use variance for the second structure. We didn't give any relief for any square footage, do you understand?
No, I think, I think the, if I recall correctly, the, um. The new, the renovation conformed, they weren't over on anything, it really was the, the.
So.
The structure in the back.
So help me out then, were we gonna be under twenty, twenty-two hundred square feet with the structure in the front?
I believe so.
I believe that.
There was a problem when they removed a lot of the previous stuff.
Yeah, well, they did it.
I think that was supposed to. Yeah, I believe it conformed, Marty, I believe that the, that the renovated structure was under. And I believe that the size of the other little house was so small that when you added them together, I believe that it conformed. In fact, they, they reduced, they reduced lot, again, remember, this was an oversized lot for the zone, where a five thousand square foot. Lot was, was the minimum lot size, they had eight thousand one hundred and eight fifty. They did a couple of things to also bring it into conformity, they were going to take certain actions to remove the existing patios, blah, 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 blah. And reduce the lot coverage to forty-seven point three percent. Which was gonna be conforming then to the zone requirements. So I don't think we got into all of those issues because they were otherwise conforming. Are the, is square footage number on it? I don't think, I know we have, but because.
I did not see that you granted any kind of floor variation.
If I'm thinking of it's right. If it's twenty-two hundred square feet and the accessory building in the back, whatever you wanna call it.
That's a question, is it twenty-nine ninety-three inclusive of this? Okay, thank you, that's what I, I was.
So I believe that needs approval, the most they could have built with the renovation on the second floor was one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five square feet.
I think, the two sixty-five. I think that's right, and I think it can form. I think since we didn't grant variance relief, then that's what it works.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do recall not focusing at all on the structure of the new house, because it didn't really matter.
Your, your recollection is pretty good from my reading of the resolution, and it really was just the setbacks to that secondary building. The use of the secondary building and the coverage coming into conformity. Um, again, we wouldn't be proposing to change any of those setbacks to the secondary building, so we'd still be abiding that. We'd still be removing the garage, still be removing the shed. Um, we're actually reducing lot coverage further than what we previously approved under this plan. Um, so it's, it's really just a matter of, um. In terms of new, new variances, new uncharted territory, we're talking about two. Um, the first of them would be the floor area, um, the maximum floor area, as, as that opposed to the floor area ratio. And then the, uh, the second would be the front setback, which is new to your ordinance. When you do new construction, you have not just the, uh, twenty-five foot setback that prevails in the zone at large. But you actually, um, require the applicant to go out and field measure the setbacks within two hundred feet on the same side of the street. And so we did that, we did a survey or do that. And that number is larger than twenty-five feet, we're proposing twenty-five feet. So we comply with the prevailing, but not the average in two hundred feet, that is a variance that we would be requesting.
Well, that would be the prevailing, so you're, you're proposing to conform with the, with the minimum in the zone, but you don't conform with the prevailing, which is what?
Uh, if you do it to the very front of each of the structures, I believe it was thirty-four point four. The surveyor also measured it to the front face of the buildings, kind of disregarding torches, there he had forty-one point. I noticed for the forty-one point one out of abundance of caution, I think the thirty-four point four is correct.
Alright, so let's look at that more closely as we get into it. So with regard to the accessory building, uh, is there going to be a proposal to remove the kitchen?
Uh, as proposed, it's remaining, uh, if that were something that the board felt strongly about, that would be a consideration that I'd have to discuss with the applicants.
Okay, so I just wanna put on the table for everybody that, you know, the, the deed notice is a good idea. And the removal of the kitchen's a good idea, because it's not gonna be rented, even if it had a toilet, that'd be a pretty sweet little office, you wouldn't need a kitchen. Um, if you weren't renting it out, so we, we can deal with that as we go. And, and the last thing is, we are stepping away from the old resolution. You are applying for new variances for a new project, you're gonna tie it, we've talked about how you're tying it together in terms of understanding what the board wanted. But you're not intending to build off of anything that you already have, per se.
No, I mean, we'll, we will discuss again those setbacks to the rear building, we will discuss the, the use of the rear building as accessory to the principal. So we're not gonna like omit that discussion and say that's, that's, you know, uh, water under the bridge, we already got that one, it's in the bag. There'll be discussion and dialogue.
Well, I'll tell you right now that it was very, very clear. That they tried to build the smallest house possible, because they knew they had too much going on. And the idea of now having an oversized house in the front changes the way all of that looks. And I think that the board is gonna wanna look at this as its own thing.
Yeah.
Certainly tie into the arguments and help us know when you're doing it. But I think that what we're looking at is a new, fresh proposal with regard to how to renovate this property and make something happen.
I think that's there, and just so that the board doesn't think that, you know, we're, we're trying to steal a march or something like that. Um, what Mr. O'Neal explained to me before we came to the hearing. Is that, um, whomever was thinking that you could support the weight of a second story on the existing foundation may not necessarily have been. Studying that adequately, he explained that there's a difference between a, a cinder block and a cement block that was previously lost upon me. But apparently it's a cinder block type construction.
And I'll just do a check, that's why we have the other exhibit. He exhibited up the photographs of the existing basement, I think clearly that it's inadequate to add another story.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, so the number we're looking at, twenty-nine ninety-three is inclusive of the second dwelling unit, let's say, right?
Yeah.
If we remove, say we remove the kitchen, it ceases to become a dwelling unit, so we back that up, is that right? If we get that wrong, what is the square footage of the second year?
Uh, I believe it's two hundred and sixty-eight.
Two sixty-five, two sixty-five.
And the main, and the house.
Twenty-seven thirty or something like that.
The house is twenty-six eighty-eight.
Twenty-six eighty-eight, that's the number.
Well, let me tease that out a little bit more, so if they were building, if this were a clear lot. And they wanted to build a two hundred and sixty square foot, um, office in the backyard, do we permit a structure like that?
Well, no.
So, we. Yeah, I'm not sure what custody's dwelling in it, that's what.
You could build a cabana and such, right?
You could build a pool house.
Yeah, but sheds are also limited on how big they can be too.
True.
It also can't, no, if it's defined, defined as a shed. Well, I, I'm, yeah, I want, I want to try.
Structure is different. So all the sheds, ten by ten. It'd be called an accessory structure, doesn't have.
Uh, so it, it's now, it's approached ten now, but Mr. Anderson, I just wanna at least present to you. The fact that that may be significant, if, if there is an argument. That you can modify that structure in a way that as a standalone accessory structure, it doesn't need to be folded into the envelope and the overall square footage. It materially changes your numbers and where you're at. Um, and so to the extent that there is a way to do something like that, hey, it's pre-existing in its location. So we've got previous non-conformities as to its exact location, but how we're gonna renovate it will leave us in a different category. Now it's a garage, a really nice garage, but now it's a backdoor garage.
And then is it even a D?
Uh, because of course, so I, I can read free the definition of dwelling unit, I don't know if this is gonna get us all the way home, but maybe it sheds a little bit of light on the question, I, I think it's a good one. Um, so you define dwelling unit as a building or part thereof, having cooking, sleeping and sanitary facilities, and so it's an and, uh, not an or. Designed for occupied by one family and which is entirely separated from any other dwelling unit in the building. By vertical walls or horizontal floors, unpierced, except for access to an outside or a common cellar. It kinda seems like it's talking about it being attached, but they, they do focus on cooking, sleeping and sanitary, so the, the trio of those things.
So I don't know historically how we've treated it in terms of square footage, but I know we've gotten into some kinda hairy cabanas where the issue becomes the cooking facility. So I know if I removing those cooking facilities, you're definitely facilitating what we would like to see with regard to whatever this is. I do not know whether or not the square footage should be looked at based on the overall lot. Or whether or not we have an avenue in the ordinance is to create something. If you were doing it from scratch, which would effectively be, I assume this is both heated and cooled and has a toilet. It's gonna feel an awful lot like a small cabana without a pool. Um, but I, I just don't know, and to the extent that by the time we get here next time, you do know. Um, I think it may substantially affect the way that the house feels at the front.
Yeah.
Because that building could be viewed on its own as maybe not the right spot, but not entirely, um. In converse with what we have towards.
You know, with, with, and I'll be delicate, cause I know we're probably approaching our, our cutoff here, but, um. One thing that, uh, was apparent to me is that we are an oversized lot, as Mr. Kovat said. Um, over eight thousand square feet in the zone that only requires five thousand, so I think we're about sixty-two percent larger than what the zone, uh, would require of us. I hesitate to stray into the upzoning, but you did mention on an earlier application, Chair. Um, we do meet, I guess, two out of three of the requirements to be, uh. Treated as an R seven five lot, so we meet the lot area, um, and we meet the lot depth, what we don't meet is the lot width. So we have about fifty-four feet in lot width, give or take. Uh, I believe the R seven five calls for a sixty feet. Uh, if we were treated as being upzoned, it takes the maximum F A R, the cap. From twenty-two hundred, uh, which we have now in the R five, I think it takes it up to three thousand twenty. And so we'd fall below it, usually.
Crazy job.
It is a crazy job.
Are you, what, 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 you need any of the setbacks?
Yeah, yeah, it's just an interesting question, the way that ordinance reads is lot area within depth. Why is the accessory all? So we need all setbacks, uh, both sides, uh, and rear for the main dwelling. We need the prevailing, uh, the prevailing setback in the R five, uh, let me see what the R seven one five is. We already established.
You mean the actual for the, for the front?
Yeah, let me just, uh. Jordan, but, sorry, give me one second. R seven point five is. Thirty feet. Yeah, so we, uh, we do not need the front setback, um, either under the two hundred foot average in the R five or under the prevailing in the R seven point five.
So, so the, while you don't qualify for upzoning, what, what's, what's relevant is that the board has the metrics of table C. To, to sort of try and understand where council is trying to set the size of points. And so that context of evaluating your lot relative to another zone is good context, even though the upzoning doesn't qualify. Um, and, and it's cer- certainly, you know, you see it with the setback, right? You see what's happening with the bigger lot, the expectation is you're gonna push it backwards. You're arguing to come forward and be proud of your neighbors relative to the prevailing, um, so look forward to getting into that.
And, and we will, I mean, I, I think what you should know now and kinda just ruminate on it over the, the next couple of weeks before we come back and see it is, um. I kinda believe the prevailing, um, sorry, not the prevailing, the average setback on this block to be a little bit deceptive. Because I think the lots, um, on the same side of the street to us, uh, just to our south, there's about three or four of them before the next corner. They are all deeper lots than ours, and in turn their houses are set a little further back than ours. As you look at our house and our lot depth, and then you look at the homes going to the north along the same side. They are all set closer to the street, they're all shallow a lot, three in a corner lot. So to me, and, and, you know, Mr. uh, O'Neal can put them. So to me, and and you know, Mr. uh, O'Neil can put in the name, that's the one I want to. I sort of view it a little bit as a, um, a phase in as you come off of River Road, the homes are a little bit closer to the street. And then you get a little further down church and there's a setback.
It is exactly the intention of the ordinance that we engage in that discussion and that we figure it out in context. So, um, we've got a receptive audience to the discussion.
Okay. The, just a question about that measurement. Um. The way that our, what is it? I broke it. I don't don't remember. Is it two hundred feet or is it on the same side of the street? It's a, I think it's the same side of the street, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't think the one on the street matters so much.
That's not how it's worded. I believe it's worded as the same side of the lot.
Same side of the lot, but I'm I'm saying, what you you do, but circle, and you mentioned, you mentioned on the other side of the street. I don't think we care about the other side of the street.
I mean, we can discuss it, but as far as.
No, it's irrelevant. It's really, you don't want this.
Well, listen, hold, hold on. It is, it is relevant to the extent that it's not written completely. So the intent was on the side of the street, no doubt, because we did, we did, we just wrote.
Um, are you saying? Back say on the same side of the street. Oh, you're wording inside same street. So two hundred feet of either side of the subject property and also are located on the same side of the street.
Okay.
So what it disregards is the homes on the other side of the street as well. All of those are much closer to the street than our side.
But and the reason it does that is because it is not relevant. Because the idea is that if one is proud of the other, why? And what, how does that impact the neighbor? And you know, there are a few houses in town that we can point to when you'll see it. Where the house sits proud and what happens is now on the other house, you're looking at the side of the house.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're we're into, uh.
I agree with you that it's more important to focus on our same side of the street. I think there is some relevancy to the opposite side of the street. And I think what we'll highlight when we do the testimony is the the homes to the north, because they're gonna sit proud no matter what. Because those lots are very shallow or they're corner lots, they're they're much closer to the road. So if not us, then, you know, it's just one lot over, it's two lots over.
Yeah, yeah, and and understanding it in context is what we really intended, um, to make sure that it's right.
Okay.
Um, I I just wanted to follow something you said before, not the lot being oversized to, and freely, and it's, but you're you're fine. And the floor area ratio would put you at two thousand square feet, right? Which you have five thousand square foot lot. Like forty-four times, um, five thousand, which adds to that. And so. What we've interpreted this is that the governing body has said, okay, you know, oversdo apply. We'll actually get a twenty-two hundred square feet in our buy zone. And I agree with that so far.
Um.
You should. Okay, so so now you're proposing to take this house down. So tell me why you can't come in and form a house.
We'll we'll get into that in testimony. I guess maybe we should unpack the point four, because I I think the point four is a dynamic number. That allows you to take account of different size lots within the zone. Then you have your static number, which is just twenty-two hundred. So I I agree with you in some regards and maybe see it slightly different.
When you're knocking down a house, why you can't build a conforming house on that lot?
That's really a global question. Uh, it really, it really is. And it it's a question you're gonna have to answer. Because you've got to establish the proofs with regard to the variance.
We've looked at this, if you're taking a house and you're renovating it, you're you're working with the existing structure and there's, could be a hardship there. Or if you've got a non-conformity lot, weird setbacks, yep, there's there's some hardship in dealing with the structure.
Yep.
I'm gonna wanna know why.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to give you a C two analysis on on on. That, and it isn't C, it's not the D.
Well, I I just wanna nail the point that you made because it it's a fact. That if you are a minimum lot, we we don't talk about it enough, Marty. If you're a minimum size lot of five thousand square feet and your cap at point four oh with regard to floor area ratio. Then you cannot build more than two thousand. In the R ten, it's twenty-eight hundred. There's a twenty-eight percent of a ten thousand square foot lot, which is the minimum. Once you go up, you can reach the cap, but you can't get to the cap without a D variance. It is intended to provide an exact flexibility. We forget it because the standards, we don't, they're not suitable for us anymore. We don't like them. But it's exactly right.
No, I I agree with you. Just one clarification, you you can't exceed the cap without the C, because they capped one of the C variance versus the floor area ratio being the D.
Yeah, but you can't exceed, you can't get to the cap without a D variance.
If you're the minimum size.
Yeah.
Great, absolutely.
Right. Okay. You got twenty minutes.
Alright, so, um, I have a few just opening remarks, then we'll get to Mr. O'Neil's testimony. So I I am John Anderson of Fox and Philip O'Neil, representing the folks. You know the property has been before you, uh, previously. Um, just wanna make sure that we covered each of the variances and then we'll we'll get Mr. O'Neil on. So so we did talk about the secondary dwelling being accessory rather than a principal that could be rented out. Still going to treat that as if it requires a D variance. Um, if we uh, are so fortunate to gain your approval, that will be remaining in the same spot. Which you could either treat as a pre-existing non-conformity, as as you may have done in the past. As far as your setback and side setback, we're treated as a fresh variance. Um, what I will say is that if we become accessory rather than principal. Even though we're not physically moving the structure on paper, we're coming into closer conformity with your ordinance. Because you have differentiated setbacks for an accessory than you would for a principal. Take it for what it's worth. I don't wanna oversell that argument to you, um, but it it is something to be cognizant of. Uh, we did mention the front setback. We comply with the general setback for the zone at twenty-five feet. But, um, we need a deviation of about, uh, nine and four tenths of feet, is that right?
From the, uh, average setback.
Uh, yes.
And then what we didn't mention before was waivers for parking. My general understanding is that we have adequate parking in terms of number of parking spaces. Both under your ordinance and under R S I S. We'll go over that in detail. What we don't have is adequate parking also meets your design requirements. Because you do not, uh, allow for parking in the front yard, uh, whereas we have some parking in a front yard. And you do not, uh, technically count a garage parking space if the garage is not setback at least thirty feet from the street. Here, the garage is twenty-five feet from the street. So. In physical space, we have sufficient parking for a home of this size. They're both criteria, but we will be discussing waivers with you. Mr. O'Neil's been sworn. Mr. O'Neil, would you put your credentials on the record if you were to work?
Uh, yes, I'm licensed as an architect and planner, and still do yours, and that's been since twenty-eighty-seven. Um, I have appeared a year before we scored on, at least my memory free occasions. It's been a while, though, probably pre-vendemic. Um, I am also the head of architecture program for the community council, and that's been twelve years. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture. I have a master's degree in architecture, a master's degree in city planning from the University of Pennsylvania. Um, again, besides Fairhaven, not being. Accepted as an expert in dozens of towns in Monmouth County. I can list them, but I'm sure it's just.
Your licenses are active, both as a professional planner and a registered.
Yes.
Will the board accept Mr. O'Neil's credentials as a licensed professional?
Any questions about Mr. O'Neil? We're good.
Alright, and Mr. O'Neil, would you just spell your name for, um, for the record?
Um, capital O, apostrophe P, capital P, and L, L. And I do need to do that.
Um, Mr. O'Neil, are you familiar with the Fairhaven ordinance?
Yes.
The master?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Sixteenth Church Street?
Yes.
Have you visited the site?
Yes.
Your office prepared the architectural plans that were marked into evidence this evening.
Yes, they did.
Um, would you orient the board to the site? You can use any of your exhibits to do so. If you can, just try to reference the exhibits. I'll get you a list here.
Uh, reference Exhibit A eleven. Which would be an aerial view of the site. So this is Church Street. River Road, Ace Place. We're on the, uh, that's our property on the west side of Church Street. Here. It's an existing house, which we talked about with its existing back building. It's a fifty-four by hundred and fifty foot. Lot, eight thousand one hundred and eight square feet in the R five zone, which has a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. So we're. About sixty-two percent larger than the minimum lot size. Uh, we've talked, Mr. Anderson, you thought that the lots to the north tend to be larger to the south.
Um, and could you just describe a little bit of the existing improvements, the home, the shed, the garage, the site?
So I'll refer to sheet A eight. We did A eight. Uh, this is the existing cellar and crawl space in the house. Um, in my estimation, and my business partner, who was also really the, he was the initial project architect on the, on project. He's at a.
Miss Wessonson?
Mr. Saxon, he's at a family wedding, I don't know, and something sitting in. Um, we have looked at the house and we took these pictures recently. Um, one of the things that we noticed very quickly is that the rules of the cellar are cinder block. And we tend to use the term cinder block and concrete block together, and they are not the same thing. So, concrete block is concrete poured into a form and dumped out. And concrete is very, very strong and compressive strength, meaning that when you pile it on top of it, it carries a lot of weight. But cinder blocks were developed in the nineteen fifties as an alternative building material for cost reasons. And what they did is that rather than it all being concrete, it's about forty percent of it are cinders. Which is the waste product that is used, comes from burning Portland lime, it's Portland cement. So the waste product is cinders, and they mix the cinders with the concrete to create a lighter, cheaper rock. And this building is made out of cinder blocks. And I do not believe that you could have the live load of the seventh floor onto that wall consciously. I think the only way to build using that foundation is if this was the foundation, and I took it. Mr. Anderson's chair, we put it on top, and those four legs were carrying the entire building. It's the only way to support it from the inside. Or the outside.
Yeah, okay.
On the outside. So in my estimation, as a licensed architect, this is not a foundation to be used. Also noted in here, if you notice, and I know what you're did, it's distance from you, this is in the crawl space. These masonry, um. Uh, um, footings are, or really they're, they're not footings, they're really supports, having a footing. What they used was they took a solid concrete block and laid it down to spread the weight of a point load, but it's inadequate. And it sits on top of what was called a rat slab. And a rat slab is not a structural concrete slab. It's just what it says. It was done to cover dirt so that vermin couldn't come up. Hence the term rat slab. Hence required about co, the building, but it's not a structural situation. And that's what's holding it up. Last thing I've noticed is, if you look at this. This is a temporary, what people call lally column. Now, lally column is not a pipe column, and it's not a steel column. They're different things. A lally column is a temporary brace. This is permanent. And what they did here is they attached it to the existing concrete slab, and I strongly doubt that there's a footing. So my estimation. The folks asked me to renovate the building and had a second floor. I have to say no thank you. Because I'm not gonna take the liability of using this. Foundation for the building.
Is there anything about the existing foundation that makes it unsafe with regard to the structure that they're today? Or if you're to replace that structure with a like structure?
I think if you replace it with a like structure, I would be. I would think that this is gonna start to crack and buckle and all sorts of things. I think once you start to take it apart. You're gonna see it start to fall apart. My own experience is, within the last six or eight months, I did instead of house and bulk snack. And as soon as we took the floor, Joey saw two of the foundation walls taped. Because without the bracing to keep it rigid, it's like having a. A bookshelf and taking some of the shelves off and it'll suddenly fall. And it's the same thing. And then it, since they have, it has no tensile strength, you know, you can't bend concrete, it just won't. So. I don't think it's habitable. I don't think it's reading people. I think it has to go. And replace it just doesn't seem silly.
So the proposal is to start completely fresh?
Yes.
You know, Marty's got a question about whether or not we can form at that point, but okay.
Yeah, I mean, from a structural and building standpoint, yes.
So we thought that was important to discuss with you, um, because you do generously grant a prior approval. In reliance on the fact that somebody was gonna put a second floor on this and people are saying, well, why don't they just put the second floor on it? And so I think that is the, um, rationale feasibility.
Tell me I should find the architect that was on the other one and not use them.
I'm not saying that.
Everybody has their opinions. Um. Uh, site improvements that are being proposed, as Mr. Anderson talked about, will be removing the existing attached rock. Removing the shed, retaining the building that's in the back, but removing the parking area that's behind the building. It's a stone parking area. And, um, when we did those lot coverage calculations, we reduced even further to thirty-eight percent.
Okay, so I'm looking at the survey. I don't know, is it just got a exhibit number on? Looking at the survey.
It does.
Yeah, I'm gonna start in back of the lot. The one-story dwelling, as as identified on the survey, is proposing, proposed to remain, correct?
Yes.
Moving to the left, the shed, it's marked shed right under the word lot, that's proposed to be removed, correct?
Yes.
The garage underneath under that's proposed to be removed, correct?
Yes.
The stone area that goes all the way from the front left of the house, all the way to the one-story dwelling in the back, it's supposed to remove.
Yeah.
All of it.
Yes.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
What about two strips of, um, concrete that run back to the garage?
Maybe we lose all of them.
All removed. Now move over to the back to the rear of the house. We've got a wood patio there. Now, this, this is all the stuff we talked about on the last one. All gone. Everything on the south side?
Yes.
All gone?
Yes.
And you're gonna remove the front walk and everything. The only thing that's gonna remain on this, on this lot is the one-story dwelling in the back.
And the staircase.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Mr. O'Neil, may maybe you want to show the board, uh, your architectural elevations and go over the floor plans of the proposed structure. We'll, we'll focus for now on the, uh, the primary structure, the the single-family residence.
So there's, um, as a new foundation system, there would be a new cellar. Cellar would conform to your ordinance as to the definition of the service. Uh, on top of that will be the first floor, which is one thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet. Um, dining room, kitchen, practice area, living room, uh, a powder room, well pantry, and one balcony.
Have you, you calculated the space of the garage in the eleven ninety-five or no?
No, that's the, um, livable area, especially then we gave it to the maximum. Uh, garage in the middle oversized for some storage in the back. Um, but, and then there's a covered front porch.
That's the entire first floor?
Yeah.
What's the square footage of the first floor?
Eleven ninety-five.
It seems small, it seems real small. Go ahead.
So then, if I go to the. Second floor. Second floor consists of two bedrooms and a master suite. Um, one bedroom in the front corner, back corner, half the bedroom here. Um, primary bathroom, walk-in closets, laundry. Um, stair in the center hallway. That, uh, is one thousand four hundred and ninety square feet of that available area.
Did you cantilever or you have a covered porch in the back?
Well, this part of the front entrance is over the covered porch.
Okay.
So you can't really notice it from the elevation.
Okay.
That's just cantilever. Um, uh, the back is also cantilevered, I believe, two feet off the back.
So, I'm sorry, so the first floor was eleven, what?
Um, eleven ninety-five.
One one nine five?
Yeah, one one nine five.
I'm gonna write it for five minutes. And the second floor is forty-eight and what?
Forty-nine.
Mr. O'Neil, for the record, the three, three bedrooms total inclusive of the master?
Yes.
And how many bathrooms store?
Um, there's a powder room, so a half-bath on the first floor. Two bathrooms, same.
Three bedrooms, two and a half bedrooms?
And are you building, uh, a usable attic?
The attic has a, has a, the staircase that in the middle goes up to the attic.
Uh-huh.
The attic is, um, three hundred and seventy-five square feet as defined in your ordinance by the. Seven-foot wall.
Right.
Everything that is engraved there would be, would have adequate head of seven foot plus. So areas to the side are.
So the attic excluded then for the purposes of floor area calculations or included?
I believe it's.
It should be actually, it should be extra, it's excluded, yeah.
And it's actually, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, the seven foot dimension, that's from the floor, uh.
So then, yeah, the seven foot dimension, that's from the floor, uh, the roof rafter?
Roof rafter, yeah.
And the attic wouldn't be used as a bedroom?
No, no. No, absolutely. And then the building.
And then you treat that as a half, half stories, is that right?
Half story, no floor, right?
Right, so that makes it two and a half stories. And then the building itself, it's a front elevation, you can't go down. Coming in the back, um, it's kind of, it's again, if you look at the back and the size of the building, it's, it's structural system, this gambrel area to pass out, it would be real in front. And that again has about twelve feet of usable space here. One of the things I think in the questions that you had, I think about the calculation is that I think that the small variation on the second floor, your calculation versus mine, had to do with this area here on the second floor, which is really not accessible. Yeah, you and I couldn't stand it.
Well, the count if it's over thirty inches.
Thirty inches.
If it's over thirty inches from the floor, it counts.
If only, well, I have to look at it in section because it might be a foot.
It's part of a new definition, if it's under thirty inches, it isn't going to count. But I need to understand that that attic space because I don't understand it when I'm looking at the elevations. Because you've got what, which direction does the attic run?
This runs all the way through.
And, and what's happening to the left and the right?
They're framing up out of it.
Yeah, but I don't think you qualify, I, I don't think you can do it that way. Yeah, because the idea is that the, the roof needs to come down. And so you need to not have seven feet because it isn't physically capable of getting seven feet. Framing over doesn't get you there.
This is, this is the space we talked about.
Yeah, but what's happening on the third floor or the attic space to the left and right?
Those are really just decorative doorways and.
But if you showed an attic plan, you could.
So I, I think Mr. Leiter, it's occurring to me you have a valid point here. Mr. O'Neil, is, we're looking at the home, you're, you're sort of looking at, you described as gambrel going front to back. What would you describe the roof as going side to side?
Uh, it's the gable.
The gable, gable roof, how?
Looked in the other direction.
Okay, I think, I, I think what we need to understand is how wide that gable is, how much space is out there.
Look at either of the side elevations.
Well, neither of them have seven feet of height.
The bridge height is the same. Both directions, right?
It should right there, but you're right, it doesn't run the whole line. It tees, it, it effectively, it's a cross.
Right, but there should be a cross space.
I agree.
Cross-shaped, seven-foot.
I, I agree. Seems to me that where they intersect and you head out to the, to the left and right side of the house, that you're going to carry that seven feet in that direction.
Sort of on the wings, on the flying.
I see what you're saying. So what's that square footage for?
I would have to come back when we come back.
Thirteen, ten and a half each side, so. You were on A one oh one, your attic floor plan. So on mine, there's a, there's a bisecting line that says thirteen, ten and a half on either side of that. That's your number, right? Yeah, it's, on the plan, it's kind of above the staircase. And there's a line that goes, that's where that piece is, right?
I'm wondering, should there be a gray box that's inside?
Exactly, that's right. And I don't know that off the top of my head.
I think you're not going to get there. Um, I think you're going to wind up being over and, and Jordan, I just want to point it out for you that the problem, and I'm not blaming Mr. O'Neil for it, but it, it's inconsistent with your intent. The, and you know, we're, we're just figuring this out as we go, because, because you're boxed the whole way. You're going all the way up to the third, and so the idea is it's got to drop off and that's the reason it's free. Um, and when you, when you put the, uh, the gable in the other direction, you defeat the planning goal um, of effectively keeping the house not looking any larger than letting people use this space.
But we have to keep seven feet or less at one-third of the fourteen ninety, so if it were.
It's supposed to run exactly, Mr. O'Neil, is exactly what we want to see, which is right there. And if they were designed exactly like that, it would be fine. But as soon as you put the other gable in and you create the cross and the additional seven-foot area and it doesn't have to be framed that way, it just has to be capable of being framed that way, you violate the spirit of what it is.
Okay.
You're looking for effectively pretty much five hundred square feet up there or less in order to honor that one-third ratio.
It's one-third, it's one-third of the perimeter.
Yeah, or the gable would just be lowered.
Right, right, right.
So you don't, if you don't hit the seven feet, then.
Yeah, but you're not, but I, but, but you're seven feet all the way to either side of that, so. You're not coming down a foot, you're going to come down multiple.
Exactly, that's just about it.
And we only have, uh, basically about a hundred and twenty-five feet of, of play, a little bit less. So we, we'd have to analyze that, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, yes, I'm like.
So we're, we're now.
Glad that it came up this evening so that we can.
So we're, so we're over. So what, what I find really interesting about the way that you designed the house is that the first floor feels small, the second floor only has three bedrooms, and I know that we can do twenty-two hundred square feet with four bedrooms upstairs, and I'm guessing that it's the size of the rooms and the layout. And, and certainly your purview, you're, you're requesting the variance, but you're starting from scratch. You got, you got a big tilt and incline to get to the C two. Um, notwithstanding the, the house in the back. You understand?
I understand.
All right, was that a motion to carry without an obligationary notice?
Yeah, July eleventh, Mr. Leiter, is that right?
I think that is right.
That is a question while we're all here.
Sure.
So, thinking back as we're going through all this, you know, we're looking at those fireplans, we're talking about these existing non-conforming structures that used to populate the area, they've been dwindled down due to a handful at this point. They have come up in the past, they've only been followed, uh, means one of the one that I can remember surviving on the board. Isn't it in our best in, interest and wishes of the overall plan to remove these structures?
Let them wither and die on the vine? No, no. So there is no policy behind what we.
Okay.
The pre-existing non-conforming protections are intended to find utility in existing structures. And I think it's the concept that the, the purpose is to bring things into conformity generally over time, but you can't take a non-conforming structure and renovate. Um, you can't, until you do such, so much that you're really removing it and starting over again, the law allows you to keep it in place and keep it safe and up to date in the meantime.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, since this is not a renovation, this is basically a area for the existing structure, primary structure.
Yes.
Is it maybe time if you look at this, but you're saying.
On the other, the other ordinance.
And again, we're now getting back.
We're getting back to the basis of this variance. I, I think that's right, and I think if the applicant were arguing to keep that as a rental unit and view the house, I think it's very different. I think the applicant has indicated a willingness to have a discussion about how to capitalize on the fact that they've got this little thing, this little quasi-dollhouse, and it's not familiar.
I, I, that's the only question. Yeah, design, everything, you know, checking all the boxes.
There's also an ordinance that says that no accessory structure can be built before the principal structure. So that's something that's going to have to be addressed as well.
Again, it, it's though, I would agree if someone tried to do something wrong around without coming before the board. By coming before the boards and saying, okay, we know that there, you know, we're going to demo, we're not going to take down the rear structure, but the division can be brought to a end.
Right, but I mean, and, and again, I had a similar situation, but it was a consideration that once you take down the principal structure, and, and this is separate from the two principal structure issue. If you, if you do something to that, to turn it into an accessory structure and you define what accessory use it's going to be, you tear down the house, principal structure, and now technically you've built the accessory structure before the principal structure, so it's not an accessory to.
The intent is to then build the approved.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that's actually what the ordinance says, so we have to.
I, I definitely understand where you're coming from, Mr. Skivetti. Um, I'll give you one example. I have not, um, been before you too, too many times in the recent past, but one of them was on Kaplan-Dukin's property. Uh, you may recall it's on the corner of, uh, Brown's Lane and River Road, and that was one where they also had a weird funky little like garage thing going on.
They wanted to keep the garage.
They wanted to keep the garage, that's why the board allows them to keep the garage. And they demolished the house and they rebuilt the house with the garage, so it's, it's not as if it has not happened, it has not happened in this town. It's happened on one of the few applications I recently had before you. I, I do understand the consideration, and I think where, where the intent may come from is you don't want a bunch of lots to get developed with an excessive structure and then nobody follows through with the main structure, and you just got this weird thing.
I just want to make sure that we discuss it and that you get the relief for that particular ordinance if we choose to grant it.
Okay, um, the other one that ties into that is pool, you demolish a house, you know, let it pool that house. And you wind up in that situation anytime you're going to take a house down with an existing pool. Um, we'll, we'll find our way through that.
So it's carried without further notice, and then just so that I kind of understand some of the more immediate concerns of the board to go back and have a dialogue with my client, one of the concerns stated this evening was will there still be cooking facilities, uh, in this, uh, secondary structure, this accessory structure? Right now there are, I hear the board to be saying that if that could be changed or modified, that that would probably be preferential. And then we also have to be analyzing this, um, gable, uh, roof that goes side to side on the property, see what that does to the floor area in the attic. And then you want an option for that, if, if the architectural levels do love that and bear to it, um, switching to the fixed airways to a pull-down. Again, they're not ideal, but that gets your way.
Well, right, I mean, to the extent you want to take advantage of having space up there that you can use, then you've got it, you've got it. But to the extent you don't care, you make it a pull-down and it's done.
Right, so, and, and the floor area in my letter includes those two small splitters that we talked about. One of the questions was how you calculated it, you answered it, but I think we can agree that those should be included in the calculation.
Perimeter wall, perimeter wall, anything over thirty inches.
Right, so I, I knew it's going to be a number between yours and mine.
So I don't know if it's one of them above the garage and is there an allowance for an unfinished space above a garage?
Well, no. Well, there's a measurement, it's around twenty-two feet. So the issue is whether or not the area above the garage can ever be finished in something that's ceiling height in excess of seven and can be, uh, fashioned in such a way in the future, you don't have to do it now, but we're not hiding any space.
Right, um, just so I understand, is the twenty-nine fifty-three inclusive of those two little squares or exclusive?
Includes them.
Twenty-nine fifty-three includes those.
That's what the discrepancy is, I have fifteen thirty-three on the site.
Right. And look, to the extent we're talking about what you got, clear issue is that you're going to start over again and you've got every opportunity to conform.
Thank you for your time this evening, I really appreciate it, you stayed late, I didn't get any air to thank you.
Sure, what, what do we have? Uh, we, we need to make a motion, a minute, um, but, uh, do you get the stipulation?
Yes, yeah, we do have a well, we had, uh, currently scheduled on the eleven, Nelson, hundred and twenty days, it's a month seven fourteen. Diakon, which was carried before eleven, to the seven eleven date. And Goodwin, um, which was also carried forward for the July eleventh date. So in terms of plan, a hundred and twenty days, Jordan, it would be good.
All right, we're going to, so we're, so we're going to, we're going to. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have to sort that. Um, you're going to be touched up. And at this point, I think we're going to carry to the eleventh and we're going to figure that out. What we do have, we have a number of issues to address, but there's no reason to believe we're not going to spend more time with you on the eleventh. I, I, I can't tell you that you're first, we'll just have to see how it plays out.
Thank you.
And if you put your stipulation on the record, where your time was?
Uh, yes, the applicant will agree to, uh, extend the time in which the board can hear and decide the application.
All right, motion to carry the, I'm sorry, who are we again? That was so easy, too. Motion to carry the block application.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll see.
Some extra copies of, uh, Mr. O'Neil's package.
Thank you. We'll read more next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of small evidences, uh, minutes will be a sixteen meeting. Uh, I reviewed the minutes and then I know directions, I make the motion approved.
Yes. Yeah.
Or we may revise resolution for nine seventeen, move around line application, I make the motion approved.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Leiter.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, resolution from a being two seventy hands road, I'll make most of your proof submitted.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And members of the public wish to make any statement. Sheriff Matt River. We do have, we should, yeah, didn't make it, but I have a, have a revised, we've seen back and forth with one Mad River. Pass these out.
Mad, not Mad River.
Anyone wants to see Mad River climb?
Bad River.
Pose the bumper sticker, Mad River climb.
If you can.
If you can. All right, then you had, you had a shorter, if I could.
Check it over, please.
Uh, we had a shorter turnaround time, obviously against an special meeting, so we had a shorter time. Um, we sent some stuff out. Mr. Atkins, I'm going to draw your attention to page three. Uh, we had a back and forth dispute on page three. I did not want to combine the building, principal building height with regard to the cupula.
Good for him.
Because they're, they're separate, so I, I'm going to simply tell Mr. Atkins that with regard to his revision um, on that he's proposed here, including the height, that we're just going to limit to, we're not even going to mention principal height because he didn't need a variance. Premet, the height, and then take the cupula, the weather vane as one, and put that down into the next bullet point.
So, well, well, hold on, I think it's, it was important that while we were dealing with was the story to have. And the truth is that we believe it's actually taller than perhaps originally approved. And what we don't want to is to, by lack of mentioning it, create any opening for them to increase that instruction.
Okay, that, that's simple enough, I can just take it out and then new variance and put in in our factual findings of the maximum height of the structure is twenty-two.
As, 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 as one of the basis for us to grant the approval from them.
Yeah, and then drop in the cupula and the cupula and the weather vane. Ostrich, whatever the heck.
It's an ostrich, come on.
And put it in, and put it in that, so I have your three ones. The other, the other, and this was simply the wrong iteration came out in my office, and I apologize for that. You may not believe or not, but I have to touch these things a couple of times. But based upon the trajectory of Mad One, after I sent this out, I wasn't going to send another one. The correct height of the sign is seven feet. Uh, it's actually six-eight, but then there's, I guess the poster a little bit higher, yeah, seven feet, and the total square footage is twenty. I'm going to make that adjustment. So if we saw those, I think the only other a, a, and, and again, this was that, I, I don't care one way or the other, on page seven, you'll see, uh, Mr. Atkins wanted to strike out, but there's a large cupula, I put it with a weather vane centered upon the main of the roof building. Some reason he wanted that struck, I don't really care. We've mentioned enough times to know why that becomes important fact issue. Paragraph nine, page eight. This I had some trouble with, but before I go and cause a problem for you. Except no moment, condition nine, originally read conditions of relief applicable to the nineteen sixty-eight resolution. And I quote resolutions, have, subject to additional conditions of approval here and after, an applicant's agreement to address site conditions in the future have been sufficiently addressed and or will be addressed by the applicant. What he wanted to put in instead was have been sufficiently addressed and or are no longer required as a result of this approval. I don't, I don't know that we went that far.
He had the issue with the parking and that clearly was no longer required. But we don't want to accidentally sweep out stuff that matters. And also, did you attach it as an exhibit?
Of the
Provisional fifty-eight?
It's going to again.
Yes.
It's going to be again, that's why I was specifically referencing that.
And the other they addressed previously. One thing that comes to mind is the radius of the curve at the intersection. You gotta be a completed, so they no longer have to address it.
Well, there's some that they don't, but I, I don't like his Tell Mark we can exclude things, it can tell you what he wants excluded, we can exclude them by name, but not vagaries.
That item on page seven. Are you something? Are, are you striking out the, the weather vane part? That doesn't exist. The cupola does, but this seems to be it's a description of the existing condition. So there is a large cupola centered on the main roof of the building, but there's no weather vane now, that's
Sure, we'll tell them later. Okay.
Okay.
So that's what you meant. Yes, page eight, and then the other, other one was, and again, I I Page twelve, condition eight, these are the conditions of approval, about sixteen, this is number eight. Coordinate with the borough, with the board engineer to ensure the site drainage is not exiting the property onto Smith Street. And if so, agreeing to implement prohibitive measures as directed by the borough engineer. In the event, and he is at it, and I don't have a problem, this independent of the requirements of this approval. That's additional language, original language. The parking area is subject to renovation and or significant improvement. He has added additional language in the future, comma, such as involving limiting the repaving of the entire parking area. He's, he's defining, if you will, attempting to define significant improvement. Applicant agrees to consult with borough engineer and comply with recommendations for improved drainage solutions.
What about moving towards sufficient to permit underground drainage improvements? Because if you qualify materiality based on what, what it can do, then you're going to open the door. You doesn't have to replace the driveway on the far side in order to get there, that wouldn't matter at all. My other comment about resting the water at whatever that road is, Smith, is that there's two ways that that can happen. The first is that we see the water coming and he's going to have to deal with it, but independent of that is to the extent that he isn't able to verify that he is in compliance with the sixty-eight resolution. So nobody's ever really proven that that thing runs the way it's supposed to run. It could be independently heightened.
I think, I think that language is there, you know, that's, that's the preparatory, I'm going to change that. With that, make those corrections, so say you all, I can do that?
Yeah.
Motion approved?
I'll make the motion, oh, second.
Yes.
Outstanding.
Yes.
Mr. Sheeney?
Yes.
Yes, a couple of comments, we've moved through some applications the last few months and that's all great. But we're still backing up. And so my expectation is that we're going to make it, we're going to ride the summer out. But then come September or something, we're going to have to stick another special in to catch up. I think we spent the right amount of time and we got to three today, which I think is great. I think what we did tonight is really good, actually. But we, it's hard sometimes to get to them as quickly as we did, so I, I keep in your mindful of that, everybody else should be as well. Well, we only have one, we can spend whatever kind of time we want, says, says it's I don't know about any, summer, traveling. I, I, I think I'm probably going to schedule around the eleventh, and then what's Wednesday meeting in August?
The first.
Definitely be up for that. Just be super mindful of those dates and be super mindful of getting ahead of telling us if you're not going to be here. Tonight we had the D, we scrambled a little bit in terms of making sure that people can, so you know, like, probably react to that. If for some reason we wound up with, you know, Skip not being here unexpected and we wound up with six, we would have hustled to get in touch with council to make sure that they wanted to sit before six. And so we never really know, I forget why, but Franch had told us in advance he was going to be here. But it happens that fast. And there's just nothing prouder than coming in and not having a lot of people and paying your people and having to send them home. Right? Anything else?
Does Sheila have all of our phone numbers?
Yeah, we did, out in the public.
Hi, yeah. Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, actually
We don't always check email.
So should I, I, I told you to call today, you can call whenever you think inappropriate. If you're sending an email, you're waiting twenty-four hours, just, you know, not everybody checks.
Yeah, you said it, no, I didn't see the, so you're
Postman, your hall paper?